Different kind of meeting tonight, town hall meeting. This is your meeting tonight, without question. We are going to start with a roll call and then oral communications. And then we're going to do nothing but traffic tonight, top to bottom. City Clerk.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Councilmember Wobak.
Here.
Nine present.
Okay, and that's all there are for now. So with that, we are going to go on to oral communications. And City Clerk, do we have cards for oral communications? Okay, so your names are listed up on the board. Bryce starts, and then Terry Baxter-Smith and Carol McPherson. If you come and get fairly close to the mic, so you can follow each other, that will help. Greetings.
All right, hello. My name is Bryce Druzen. I grew up in Palo Alto, and lived here for most of my adult life. So I'm going to talk about something that's a little adjacent. But, you know, our city is home to many companies whose products and technologies improve people's lives. But also, our city is also home to companies whose products hurt people. And one of these companies is Lockheed Martin, a defense company. They founded their advanced technology center in Palo Alto back in 1956. And that center is still here, just located off Page Mill Road. And Lockheed Martin has been in the news lately. They sell weapons to Saudi Arabia. And Saudi Arabia has been in the news lately because they brutally murdered journalist Jamal Khashoggi. Saudi Arabia is also in the news for their brutal ongoing war against the country of Yemen. And that country uses Lockheed Martin weapons to kill thousands and thousands of innocent people. Specific example, reported by CNN, other news agencies. On August 9th, a Saudi air force jet dropped a laser-guided bomb on a school bus in Yemen, killed 40 children between the ages of 6 and 11. And that bomb was made by Lockheed Martin. That is a fact, reported by multiple news agencies. You know, I grew up here. This is my hometown. And frankly, I think it's just disgusting and shameful for our city to benefit economically from the presence of Lockheed Martin. And it's really just, it's disgusting. And you know, for all the, and this is, you know, true up and down Silicon Valley. There's a lot of good companies, do a lot of good stuff, but technology we develop is also used for really, really evil stuff. And Lockheed Martin has no, they could care less who they sell their weapons to. If they were allowed to sell their weapons to North Korea, they would do it. They're only constrained by U.S. law in terms of who they'll give their weapons to. Mohammed bin Salman, the Crown Prince of Saudi Arabia, just visited just a few months ago. You can see a picture of him with the Lockheed Martin CEO Marilyn Houston smiling at one of their facilities. Yeah, it's gross. It's just gross. It really is. And, you know, I'm ashamed of myself for not having really done anything constructive to, basically, I don't know. Don't really know what I'm going to do or what I can do. But like I said, we should just all be aware that we're literally benefiting economically from companies like Lockheed Martin, whose business model includes dead children. And there's actually momentum right now in Congress for banning weapons sales to Saudi Arabia, which I think is an obvious no-brainer. And I hope that momentum actually leads to the actual ban of sales to weapons to Saudi Arabia. And I think the city council could provide a symbolic gesture that would make news if passed some kind of resolution or declaration saying that as long as Lockheed Martin sells weapons to Saudi Arabia, we don't want them in this city. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Terry Smith and Carol McPherson and Edie Gellis.
Hi, good evening. My name is Terry Baxter-Smith. I am the Assistant Swim Coach of the Rinconada Masters. I've either coached or swam for this team for over 30 years. I graduated from Pali High School in 1982. I'm a 1980 Olympian in swimming, a bronze medalist at the Pan American Games in swimming in 1987. I have extensive aquatic experience, which includes coaching collegiate swimmers, age group swimmers, adults, as well as being a former YMCA aquatic director. Last week, our team, Rinconada Masters, was totally blindsided when Tim Sheper Incorporated informed our head coach, Carol McPherson, and a couple of our board members he was not going to renew Rinconada Masters' contract for 2019. Thus ending the Rinconada Masters program and our 45-year relationship with our community. In the past, Rinconada Masters has had productive, positive, and beneficial relationship with previous aquatic directors, the Parks and Recreation Department, and the city itself. If there were any problems or grievances, they would have been resolved, and they were resolved. Now, within one year of Tim Sheper's company taking control over the Rinconada Pool's aquatics program, he is unilaterally ending our program. Last week, Tim Sheper gave us three main reasons as to why he is not renewing our contract. From my experience and my aquatic leadership experience, I can tell you that all three of these reasons can be remedied. And we want to remedy these main reasons why he does not want to renew our contract. Tim Sheper is not interested in us being, trying to renew, I mean, trying to find a solution to the problem. And he let us know that. I am going to share with you a sample of Tim Sheper's vision that was discussed at a Parks and Recreation meeting from May 2017 before he had his contract. This was taken from the minutes from May 2017 and spoken by Jasmine LeBlanc, who works for the Community Services Department. Quote, "We want to add in the contract language that guarantees Rinconada Masters and PASA, which is Palo Alto Swim Association, that they have the same pool access that they've had in the past. If they want all the same hours, they can have the same hours. We want to make sure the terms work for everyone. That is very important to us, to maintain what has been working for us for so long." And to finish up, 16 months later, Tim has no interest in working with us, therefore not renewing our contract. We are asking that you help save our swim program that has been here for 45 years, since 1972 and 1973. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol McPherson.
I am Carol McPherson. I've lived in Palo Alto since 19, oh, I'd say 40, 50 years, anyway. I learned to swim at Palo Alto, at the Rinconada Pool, when I was seven. I continued there until I was 13, and then I went to Santa Clara Swim School, Swim School, Santa Clara Team, where I swam for six years, tried out for the Olympics, have had many records. I'm an All-American. I've been a Pan American Games also. The Rinconada Masters has been my home for 46 years. The team is more like a family. We take care of each other. We also take care of some of our swimmers that have to rehab from getting hurt. We also have a Swim for Fitness program that feeds into our Masters program with people who want to improve their strokes or just learn how to swim. I've had many lap swimmers that come over and take their lessons just to improve their strokes, and still go back to lap swimming, which is just fine. But the problems with not renewing our contract is very difficult for my whole team. We've been using this pool for, like I said, 46 years. Tom Osborne is the one we started with back in '73. We've won national team records we've done. We put on national meets at Santa Clara as a team. We've done international swimming, which is Rinconada Masters of Palo Alto, California. So we've put your city on the map many times in different countries. So I would ask that you consider going over and talking about renewing our program and have some insight for us. We would like some backing from the Palo Alto community. We have backed you for many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Edie Gellis and then Shannon MacIntyre.
Good evening, and thank you for this open mic to speak with you. My name is Edith Gellis. I'm here to talk about the Rinconada Masters swim team. I'm 82 years old, and I've been swimming with Rinconada for 35 years. I'm a senior scholar at Stanford. I'm a historian of early America. Because I'm a historian, I want to address the history of Rinconada and how our history has fit into the history of Palo Alto for 45 years. Rinconada Masters is a program for adults who wish to participate in a structured training program. We are part of a national masters organization. Some of our members compete. Most of us do not compete, but opt for the rigorous training program for health and/or recreation purposes. Our Rinconada Masters program was the first and the only masters program in this area for many decades. But we've always been more than a swim team. We are a community of people of all ages and occupations. We are also a family, and we've grown as families do. When someone has a birthday, we celebrate. When someone has a baby, we celebrate. When someone passes on, we grieve. There are Palo Altons in our program who went to grade school, high school, and college together, and then came back here to join our masters program. We have served this city for 45 years, long enough to serve generations of Palo Altons. But the Palo Alto of 45 years ago has changed too. Much of the change has been great. We are a vibrant, exciting, forward-looking city. In other ways, change has been negative. Traffic and parking problems are the tip of the iceberg. Our struggle has been to grow and change, and to still hold on to what has been great in Palo Alto culture from the past. How do we maintain the best traditions of Palo Alto quality of life and nudge them into the future? The city of Palo Alto has decided that the public pool, which has served generations of its citizens, should be farmed out to a private corporation for its administration and operation. In the process, the future of Rinconada Masters is threatened with extermination. Our group, our community, our family that has served and been served by this city may be discontinued. To do so will be to annihilate a valued resource that has contributed to the quality of life in this city for decades. We are a small organization. This is death by a thousand cuts. Destroying the resources that have been part of Palo Alto tradition is not a way to move securely into the future. Every great enterprise needs roots. I ask you to save our masters program, as it currently exists, within the changes that will take place in the overall governance of Rinconada Pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon MacIntyre, Elizabeth Greenfield, and Timothy Groves.
You said that name right. Thank you. First of all, let me thank you all for your service to the city. I know it's an enormous job that you're doing all the time. I just had a couple of things on a totally different topic that I wanted to ask you to consider and to maybe put, push forward to the sustainability team on the city staff. One is, you know, we all made a very big deal about starting composting about a year ago, and now many of us are buying these compostable bags at the grocery store. They're green, kind of suggests that it's a green thing that we're doing, right? What I wanted to point out is that Safeway, maybe among other stores, have plastic green bags in their produce section, which would lead you to think that it's compostable, but they're not. They're plastic. And most of us are way too busy to, you know, check it and read it and discover that, oh, okay, that doesn't go in compost. So I think it'd be really simple to ask Safeway not to use those green bags in our city where we have composting service. I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer. So I'm suggesting that, that you ask the sustainability staff to work on that. Also, I wanted to say that it would be really great to have all of our markets using compostable bags. This is one I got in Italy this summer. It says, "Un sacco ecológico per l'ambiente." Ambienti is the environment. And they use those as a matter-of-course in Europe. And I'm thinking, okay, why aren't we doing that? It's so easy. And I'm not suggesting any new laws. I'm suggesting asking and suggesting to the people who market in our city. And I respect them, but I think that would be an easy change to do. The other simple thing, oh, by the way, I forgot when I introduced myself to say that I'm a zero-waste block leader, and I'm also a cool block leader, although my cool team is a condo team. So we're the Cool Condo Team, 55 units. The other suggestion I have is there's a new bus. Nobody knows about this. A friend of mine in San Jose called and told me, "Shannon, did you know there's a new bus? It goes from the Caltrain station over to all three terminals at SFO. This is part of Samtrans. But we should know about this here. If you have ever taken the train to the airport, you know that that transition on BART is so complicated and confusing and expensive. This costs half the price." So my suggestion on this is to get this in the libraries, to get them downstairs. Downstairs, there are Caltrain schedules, but there aren't any of these that have the schedule for when it leaves the Millbrae Station and goes over to the airport. So so simple, and I have ridden this now, going and coming, twice. And guess what? I'm practically the only one on the bus. Nobody knows it exists. And this is so simple. So those are my recommendations. And again, thank you for your service.
Would you be willing to leave that schedule with our clerk?
Definitely.
Thanks very much. Maybe we can get some more.
Yeah, I hope so.
Was that Shannon?
Yes.
Timothy Groves.
My name is Timothy Groves. I'm currently a Palo Alto resident and a member of the Rinconada Masters Swim Club. The Rinconada Masters currently have a subcontract with Team Sheper Incorporated, a for-profit contractor to the city of Palo Alto, to supervise the public Rinconada Pool facility. We support the existing contract and the subcontract and abide by both willingly. Last week, Tim Sheper, who was principal of Tim Sheper Incorporated, informed us that he intends to unilaterally cancel our subcontract after the New Year and reallocate the swim lanes to another, quote, "masters" group of his own devising. This could effectively prevent the Rinconada Masters from using the Rinconada Pool facility, which we have done continuously and successfully since 1972. As one reason, he cites a lack of certified lifeguards and individuals certified in CPR. This is incorrect. We have three lifeguards with valid and current Red Cross certification. In addition, we have 14 swimmers with valid and current CPR certification. We meet our contractual obligation to have qualified supervision present and on duty at the pool during all of our designated hours. We therefore have two requests. One, that the Parks and Recreation Commission improve and increase its oversight of contractor Team Sheper, to prevent what threatens to become a devastating and unfair situation for the Rinconada Masters. Secondly, that our existing subcontract between Rinconada Masters and Team Sheper be renewable, with appropriate modification for allocation of swim lanes effective January 1st, 2019. Thank you for your attention.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, wondering if staff could respond in good time to the comments you've heard tonight about Rinconada Masters and how it relates to the contract with Sheper.
Yes, we'll follow up, get some information, both to council as well as to stakeholders.
Thank you. You, and if there are no other comments, we're going to go on to our main showing tonight, which is going to be a town hall meeting discussing traffic. I'm going to guess most of you are here for that. If you're here for something else, would you put up your hand? Good, okay, that helps. No, those of you who spoke on the swim team, we have your names, so you're welcome to stay. Okay, so tonight, we are going to discuss one of our most perplexing problems. And once, I certainly retracted my comment this summer, so there are certain things that one sees in a different light. And tonight, we're going to talk about what seems to be one of the main issues in Palo Alto right now. Certainly has garnered a great deal of attention. You'll notice that we've had TV cameras over here as well, who are interested in what you have to say. So we have a presentation from our staff to start with, and then it will be your night. And what I'm hoping is, in addition to telling us the areas that are a real problem for you, that you'll suggest some answers to us. Something that we might not think about, that we might look at in a different way. And also to remind you that currently, we do not have anybody heading up our traffic department. You know that Josh Mello left. It's been now six, six or eight weeks. And so that's a challenge. It's a challenge to find somebody in that particular area. And you probably all know it's hard to hire people right now in the Bay Area for very obvious reasons, some of them being traffic. So with that, I'd like to invite our acting city manager, Ed Chikata, to say a few words, and then I think Rob will also jump in.
Yes, will do. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Ed Chikata, Assistant City Manager. Appreciate that lead-in. Perhaps as we talk about traffic issues and existing vacancies within our transportation staff, to a certain extent, the discussion tonight may frame some of the duties and some of the priorities, both for the person as well as this part of our city organization. So I hope that the suggestions of what can be done, keep that in light of our recruiting posture at the present moment. So also appreciate everyone coming out with this town hall format. It will be a bit of a first for us to try to get some of the logistics through. We did think that while certainly our primary objective here this evening is to listen and to get some suggestions and understand priorities and issues of concern from the community, we also use it as an opportunity to provide some baseline information. So we have both some quantifiable data as well as some information about existing programs that the city pursues. So with that, why don't I turn it over to Rob, that has stepped in to the gap and has been managing our transportation team, the small and mighty transportation team. Thanks.
And Rob, would you introduce your staff who's also here?
I will, Mayor Niss. As I open up here, Rob DeGosse, Deputy City Manager, worked with Ed Chikata. I'm very pleased to be here. I'm pleased to see so many of the public here. The town hall today, as we mentioned several times, is mostly to serve as a forum for the council and the staff to hear from the public regarding their concerns about traffic in the format, with some introductory remarks and then a presentation. The presentation, we hope, will be no more than, you know, 20 minutes or so, and it's intended to set, help set some context in a few ways. And we'll talk a little bit about the status of resources for transportation in the city organization. Do a brief overview of regional traffic in the area. We'll summarize the city's goals and objectives in transportation, including traffic congestion. And finally, we'll end with a report on the Charleston-Arastador Road Corridor Project. And then, of course, we'll go to public speakers and then discussion. Next slide. So we have some presenters, obviously incoming city manager, Ed Chikata, myself, Rob DeGosse. I have had the pleasure of stepping in after Josh Mello left, the Chief Transportation Official, to work with the Transportation Working Group. We also have Holly Boyd, who's right next to me here. She's a senior engineer in Public Works, and she's overseeing the Charleston-Arastador Road Corridor Project. And then to my, to her right is Wayne Tonda, and he's from the Municipal Resources Group. And I'll say a few more words about Wayne when it gets time for his part of the presentation. So to help get us started, just in terms of setting some context, the Transportation Work Group within the city organization has 10.5 full-time equivalent staff in this working group. And we currently have three vacancies, including the Chief Transportation Official. They are responsible for most things related to traffic, but a great variety of things beyond that, many ongoing programs, projects, citizen response, and capital projects. Their activity within this work group falls within the categories you see in this table on the left. And on the right, you see some examples of the types of specific programs and projects that they oversee. So for example, under Bicycle and Walking, they oversee bicycle parking, as well as supporting the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee. In Safe Route to School, which is this amazing program, they have a great diversity of activity in there, including the coordination of the City School Traffic Committee and Bike and Safety Education Program for parents and students, including maps and other things. Parking also falls within transportation. It's under-resourced at this time. We'll talk more about that later. But that includes the residential preferential parking program, signage, wayfinding. We're currently in the process of selecting and implementing a new modern parking permit citation system. Palo Alto Shuttle Program also falls within the Transportation Working Group, Traffic Operations and Safety, which is street design and development review, signal operations, data collection on volumes, and that type of thing. And then finally, we have transportation projects, and there's a whole variety of construction projects related to improving our street and bike and pedestrian systems. And one very large one, as you know, the grade separation project falls within the Transportation Work Group. I think the main thing that we wanted to share here is there is a lot of activity and projects and programs to manage within transportation. The current resources for all of these activities is quite limited. We're experiencing quite a bit of regular turnover in this area. So, which relates to the next slide, and it's both timely and much needed at this time for us as an organization to review the transportation staffing structure and the sustainability of the city's transportation programs and services in the months ahead. And the council knows this, but I'm not sure all the public does, but last week on Monday, the council approved the contract with the Municipal Resources Group. Do a number of things, including a review and make recommendations to the city manager on the organizational structure for transportation, including staffing and city transportation functions, and the decision-making process of transportation decisions, both internal departmental coordination and boards and commissions. The Municipal Resources Group, and this is really Wayne, will also help review and develop process improvements for transportation project implementation in the community, working with staff and the community. And finally, we'll also assist as needed with major projects like the RPP program, grade separation, and bicycle boulevards. So with that, it is my pleasure to say a little more about Wayne Tonda. He's a new member to our team, and we're thrilled to have him onboard. He has 40 years of distinguished career in transportation. He's been the General Manager of Los Angeles Transportation, Director of Monterey County Resource Management Agency, has been the Director of Transportation for the city of San Jose. He's highly skilled, he's a highly skilled professional in organizational analysis and development, and we're thrilled to have him here. He's also a registered professional civil and traffic engineer in the state of California, and has experience in all areas related to transportation, traffic engineering, operations, and infrastructure. So with that introduction, I'd like to pass it on to Wayne for the next part of the presentation.
Thank you very much, Rob. And is red bean, it's on?
Yes.
Okay, that's the opposite of what I'm used to. Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to be with you tonight. Thank you very much, Rob. You'll hear from the speakers tonight, probably unique issues from each of them. And I've attempted just to try to gather and put into categories, and we have five --
of them up there on that slide in front of you, of the types of issues that are out in the community. Obviously, one is congestion and safe and delay. If you take an individual, however, out of that car and put them in their home, they're looking at traffic a bit different. And so it's really looking from my front yard, what does traffic look like? And it looks bad, it's cutting through my neighborhood. So that's an issue also, obviously. When you consider the fact that motorists, some motorists are going a little fast, and they may not exercise the care that they should, that becomes a concern also about the behavior. Looking at from my front yard, parking's an issue. And in residential areas, as you very well know, there's concerns about parking in my neighborhood, to the extent that I have a difficult time parking. On the other hand, there are individuals, everybody does this, when they go somewhere, they're trying to find a parking space and they have difficulty. So that then becomes an issue from that perspective. Then, of course, and lastly, in Palo Alto, what's so very important is how we share the road. You have a limited amount of ride away, it's shared by automobiles, by transit, by bicyclists, by pedestrians, and exactly how you do that is an issue. The city of Palo Alto, what I've observed, does it in a very comprehensive way. You have eight goals in your plan, the comprehensive plan. In other words, what's in your general plan. And they all relate, they all relate to finding solutions, and so in a true sense, they are interdependent. The first of those goals is creating a sustainable transportation system, which is much more in Palo Alto than words. You actually have put tremendous effort, gotten tremendous results in promoting alternatives to the SOV, Single Occupant Vehicle, and there is riding solo. You do that through the promotion of bikes, through transportation demand management, through the promotion of transit, walking. You actually do a lot there, and that helps to address the traffic that would otherwise be there if everybody was going in a single occupant vehicle. Goal two is the more traditional decreasing delay through operational efforts, through congestion, not through congestion, but to mitigate congestion, as well as VMT, or vehicle miles traveled. The third is maintaining an efficient roadway, which you obviously do an excellent job at. You are the envy of all the other cities, many of which I've had the opportunity to be with in this county for having such a great managed street system, thanks to you and certainly Department of Public Works. But it's been rated number one in Santa Clara County for a long time. Protecting neighborhoods is obviously a transportation goal that has a lot to do with how you go about finding solutions or pursuing solutions to congestion. The fifth is providing and managing parking for motorists and bicyclists, providing safe environment for all roadway users, providing mobility for the transit-dependent, and last, influencing regional policies, so that the problems that you experience here in Palo Alto are being addressed. So, if you take a look at it without all of those words, what does it really mean to me here in Palo Alto? Well, we took a snapshot, a long time ago snapshot, way back in 1967. And it wasn't a magical year, it's just what we happened to find as the oldest traffic flow map in the city. And what the traffic flow map showed way back then, almost 50, actually over 50 years ago, is that in an east-west direction, in other words, on your east-west streets, your University and Barcadero, Oregon Expressway, Page Mill Road, your Charleston, Arascadero, and also San Antonio, you take all of those, there are about 200,000 cars, 208,000 cars that were reported traveling on those streets. A little over, a little less than 50 years ago, in 2016, using a similar type of technique, the counts were a little higher, at 222,000. Growth, not much, but still a growth. Maybe a bit of a surprise until you take a look at what happened in the east-west direction. The east-west direction includes Route 82, US 101, it includes Alma and Middlefield, and even going down to some collector streets, such as Lewis. You add all of them up, and the traffic that's going through Palo Alto in 1967 is at 225,000, but in 2016 is 358,000, almost a 60% increase during that period of time. And the reason, I'm sure you could conclude, is sort of obvious. Take a look here. It's obvious because there are more jobs, more jobs create more travel, and some of those jobs are obviously in Palo Alto. What you see on this slide, for a five-year period from 2012 to 2017, is an increase in the number of jobs in Palo Alto by about 5,000. But you take a look at the other jurisdictions in the northern area of Santa Clara County, and you'll see increases in Mountain View, Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, and San Jose. You add all of those up, that's about 100,000 jobs. During the same period of time, 95% of the job creation in the northern part of Santa Clara County was outside of Palo Alto, beyond Palo Alto's control. When you add also what's occurring in San Mateo and in San Francisco, you can see that regardless of what Palo Alto does, there's going to be more travel, and it's going to be in an east-west direction. North-south direction, that was a test question, to see if anybody was listening. The next slide shows that there's been an increase in travel time. The three lines are for, on the top, the county of San Francisco, the bottom is what's occurring in Santa Clara County, and the middle is what's happening statewide. They all follow the same profile, and they all point out that over a period of 10 years, from 2006 to 2016, there's been an increase in the travel time, and that, of course, correlates with what we all experience. So what does this mean to Palo Alto? What's happening on Palo Alto streets? Well, the points of greatest congestion outside of the schools during school hours, but normally, the greatest congestion occurs, of course, at the intersections, the intersections of the larger streets. There's 27 here that are considered the most congested, 17, I apologize, most congested in Palo Alto, out of about 100 intersections that have signals. The 17 are shown by those yellow dots, the legends to the left of that, identify exactly which intersections they are, and there's no surprise. It's the big east-west, north-south intersections, the same streets that I mentioned earlier. So, what does that look like in real time? Well, this is using an app, I think it was, Waze, it's Waze, I don't have this particular app. But it showed last Friday that there was traffic congestion being reported in the upper right, near the Crescent Park area, along University. There's traffic, there's reports of congestion occurring during the peak commute. In fact, the travel time there was estimated to be about six miles per hour. If you take a look at the lower box, it shows a similar type of thing in the southern area, around Arascadero and Charleston. This particular slide shows that, again, using the upper right, around the Crescent Park area, that there are reports of congestion outside of that area. And then to the lower left, the attempt here is to show that there is congestion being reported everywhere in the greater Palo Alto area. Again, no surprise to anybody. So, what's being done? Well, this is a regional problem, and the region really has to be coming to the forefront to really help with some of the solutions. What this slide is just about, the regional improvements. They would include the completion of some express lanes on Route 101. And what we mean by that is, rather than just having an HOV lane for high occupancy vehicles, or car pools, the express lanes are hot lanes, high occupancy toll. So that for premium, just like we have in other areas in the Bay Area, motorists would be able to travel on those, in those lanes. It's not unlike what you do with utilities. On Caltrans, electrification and service enhancements are in the process right now, moving forward. Of course, there's high-speed rail, that still hasn't jumped the final set of hurdles, but it's certainly something that has to be reckoned with, and it will provide some relief between some cities, and actually, it'll be between regions. There's the Dunbarton Corridor improvements that are being considered, they're in the planning stage, and the benefits to Palo Alto there is what's being looked at are enhancements to facilitate buses. And if you have people coming over across the bay headed toward Palo Alto in buses, that's much better to have than rather having 30 or so cars coming into the city. So it's a very important improvement. And then, of course, there's the Measure B projects, which hopefully will clear the final litigation barriers. And there's improvements there along the Caltrans Corridor, transit operations, county expressways, such as the one on Oregon and Page Mill Expressway, as well as highway interchange improvements. Almost finished here, looking at Palo Alto's actions. The three areas in Palo Alto, and it could be presented to you in a variety of different ways, but the three that are being proposed for your consideration are reducing bottlenecks, reducing locally-generated traffic, and lastly, enhancing street operations and safety. The first is under bottlenecks. The posted child of all bottlenecks are really the grade separations. If you don't have the grade separations, there's going to be significant delays, probably just totally unacceptable at the four locations that are being considered at this time. This is, as the council is very well aware, a high priority, maybe the top priority in the city in terms of infrastructure that's going forward. The second area is reducing the percentage of single occupancy vehicles, or solo vehicles. This is where, once again, the city is really taking a, has for really decades, taken a very assertive position in trying to get people out of their car when possible through TDM, or Transportation Demand Management. That's often done at the time that a development's coming into the city, that requirements would be made to promote the use of transit, carpooling, bicycling and walking. The support of the Transportation Management Association, improving access into the Palo Alto Transit Center, the Safe Route to School program, which, as you're very well aware of, is extraordinary. You should be proud of it, it's doing things that really a few other Safe Route to School programs do, but it's essentially leaving children with a feeling of safety, take bikes, and the habit of taking bikes that roll up to high school students. Just take a look at what's over at Poly. And hopefully, that transitions over to adults, so that bicycling, as well as walking, are really become viable alternatives for those who live, at least in Palo Alto. The Palo Alto Shuttle, of which there's several lines, complete street projects, and bicycle boulevards. So the last one would be the enhanced city, street operations and safety. That would include the timing of the signals, there's again about 100 intersections in Palo Alto that are controlled by signals, and upgrading equipment as it becomes necessary and appropriate, traffic operations and safety investigations. And what that is, because I've seen that that really isn't identified very much in the city, your 3-1-1 system allows residents to call and register concerns about all kinds of things. And if they have an issue about traffic and about parking, some of those, at least, are addressed using that method. And staff is assigned to really focus in and try to make improvements in those areas. Speed limit, engineering and traffic surveys, and I think you're well aware of that, in order to be able to legally use radar enforcement, the speed limit has to be consistent with this, and engineering and traffic survey, and so those are done. The installation, where affordable, using electronic speed feedback signs, enhanced crosswalk treatments, and capital improvements. It's about a dozen capital improvements that are, the transportation office is involved in, it covers a wide spectrum of things. So I would like to, in my closing part of it, just mention one project. That project responded to community concerns. It's Middlefield North, it's brought up because it is one that is in response to concerns that were raised by the community, to address the points that are shown on the slide in front of you, having to do with collisions, reducing impacts from traffic, quality of life, improving access and mobility, improving operations, and avoiding significant environmental impacts. The reason, too, is this item will be coming to the council for a final review and acceptance of the project. The project went through a process where the improvements were installed, there was a pilot period of one year, an evaluation was made of the impact of those things, the community re-engaged, and it's being brought back to you, I believe, as a consensus from the community that this is a good project and it has merit. With that, it's my pleasure to turn the presentation over to Holly Boyd, in the Department of Public Works, who will be going over another nifty little project.
Good evening, councilmembers. So I just wanted to come here tonight and include some updated information regarding the Charleston-Arestodero project that's currently under construction. A reminder about the background, it has a nearly 20-year history that included some trial striping phases for both Charleston and Arestodero. In 2014, it was included as one of the infrastructure plan projects. And then, most recently, in May of this year, council approved construction contracts for Phases 1 and 2. And then Phase 3 construction is expected to start in 2019. So a reminder about, regarding who this project is serving, there's eight adjacent neighborhoods along this 2.3-mile stretch that goes from Fabian Way to Miranda Avenue. There's 11 schools, and many other community facilities, including parks and community centers. So, after the construction contracts were approved in May, our contractor's first action was in July, was to set up the temporary mockups for the new geometric features on the side streets along Phases 1 and 2. So they included paint, straw waddles and planters, where there would be new landscaping. And each corner received a "What's Going On Here?" sign on a barricade, as you can see a sample up on the upper right-hand side, that showed what the proposed improvements are to let the public and the residents along the corridor, to see what was happening. So during that five-week period, we received about three dozen emails, phone calls, walk-ups in our field meetings regarding these temporary mockups. So these four locations received the most concern at Donald Pomona Coulom Drive and Carlson Circle. So we took a look at those locations and checked out the design, and basically, the concern for those four locations were that the bulbouts were too big on one of the, one sides of these intersections. So we made modifications, as you can see in this table, that basically decreased the bulbout and smoothed out the corners. And we responded to the residents that emailed us and called us, and we posted those new designs on our website about six weeks ago. In addition, we took, we looked, oh, before I get there, here's an example of our design change for Carlson. So this is what's up on our website now. You can see in the yellow box on the right, that the original design had, is in black, shows the bulbout for the northeast corner, and we realized that it was too difficult to make right turns there, for a larger vehicle, or actually a truck, or the shuttle that happens to use this Carlson Circle route. So we reduced the bulbout by about five feet, and the new proposed design is in red. So those are the examples that we've posted on our website. But additionally, we started looking at all the other intersections along the corridor, and we made, are making changes right now to reduce the bulbout sizes from anywhere to one to four feet, and basically smoothed out the corners, so they're not as tight turning, to allow for a more smoother turn. So, right now, we're in design, making those modifications, but we're still in construction on portions of the corridor, so the project is still moving forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ed.
Okay, so that effectively completes the presentation. We thought it would be helpful to give you this baseline information. And we started with the big picture, you know, some of the regional issues that are in play affecting our local traffic within Palo Alto, but then ending with a couple of specific examples of projects that we've completed recently. And really just picking And really just picking up on that last project on Charleston-Arastodero, really demonstrating the type of new model in some ways, and the higher level of interaction, using temporary measures to start with, higher levels of communication and flexibility that we believe are really necessary in order to take on the projects of these nature within a way that can work for a community. And that said, I think that it's fair to say that still not everyone is in support of some of these projects. And at the same time, I think we want to ensure that as we are proceeding with the overall direction to proceed with these projects that have been defined, that they're done so in such a way that really do reflect a caring and a listening to the practical issues that come into play along the way. So with that, Madam Mayor, members of the council, stand ready for questions or wherever you'd like to go from here.
Thanks very much, Ed, Rob, Wayne. It's really, was, it was, you undertook quite a bit to put that together for tonight, and I appreciate it. So no, this is, I think we'll hear from council later, but this is really our opportunity to hear from the community. And with that presentation in mind, and with the suggestion made earlier that we'd be delighted to hear some answers or some suggestions and so forth when you talk about what the problem is, we are going to go to the public. And city clerk, could you put up the names and let us know? Thank you, who's speaking and when. John Gislin is speaking for Norm Bima, Myles Zelka, Tim Lindholm, Beth Gislin and Liz Eden. So seven minutes for this presentation.
Okay. Madam Mayor, council members, my name is John Gislin, and I am a Crescent Park resident. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for bringing us together tonight. It didn't come about in the way perhaps any of us would have wanted, but we're here now, and I think a meeting like this is overdue. So thank you, mayor, for doing this, and let's make the most of it. After hearing the city's presentation, I must say, it was so rosy, I maybe I don't need to be here, but maybe that's not quite true. The regional issues, we don't expect the city to address the regional issues, we expect them to participate in the solution, but not solve them. We want them to focus on our local issues. And as far as the data about road travel and traffic, citizens are working right now on collecting census data and DMV data that will give you maybe a more detailed picture of what the traffic growth has been like in Palo Alto. And thirdly, the goal of reducing the percent of SOV traffic, while that's admirable, if the overall traffic number goes up, even if you have more SOV people or less fewer SOV people, two people in a car take up as much space on the road as one person in a car. So maybe we need to refine some of those metrics. So in response to the mayor's comments a few weeks ago, that were at odds to what many residents felt they experienced every day, Crescent Park initiated this survey. So we're lucky that we have an email list that we can use to do that. And I'd like to walk through some of the results of what 189 Crescent Park residents said in this survey. Is it the down arrow or?
The right arrow.
The right arrow, okay.
John, just to say, this is what you're going to be talking about?
Exactly, thank you.
And do people in the audience have copies?
I do not have copies of everyone. It's actually online, Lincoln and Palo Alto Weekly, and all the council members and the city clerk have copies.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a copy of that? Okay, so we did a survey, we're just giving you some background to compare our survey to the National Citizen Survey. We had 850 email addresses versus three fasten addresses for the national survey, 189 responses. The national survey got 614, so about the same percent response rate, so we're happy with that result. I think it shows that the people are motivated to participate. I'm going to walk through a few other results with you. The first one is that 88% of the people of the responders said that they strongly agree or agree that traffic is a serious issue.
Excuse me, can I interrupt just for a second? Could the clerk get what's on the screen, on our screens? Because this is a very thick document, it's hard to follow in this, and I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's all right.
That's very helpful, thank you.
You got it? Okay. So, you know, the answer to some questions, as I said, couldn't be clearer, 88% say traffic is a serious problem. It wasn't a surprise to me, because I've lived there for quite a while, but it maybe was a surprise to some of you, that so many people see it as a serious issue. We also asked people when traffic is the most problematic, and the answer there is essentially during commute times. So the evening commute is the worst, followed by the noontime commute, followed by the morning commute. Again, not surprising, but it just solidifies our belief that commuter traffic is the source of our major traffic problems. So getting more people in Palo Alto not to drive, more residents, is admirable, but it's not going to address the big problem that we all face. When asked about their top concerns about traffic, why, what fears it raises in them, what concerns, most people were aggravated that it takes longer to get to a freeway or that it takes longer to do a short trip. So if you pick up your kids after school and it's only a mile or a mile and a half away, it takes much longer than you would like it to take to get there. But they also said they feel unsafe as a bicyclist because such roads are so crowded, and sometimes crowded roads induce erratic driver behavior. And fourthly, the fourth highest ranking was impeded access for emergency vehicles. And that's a concern for everybody, I think. If your street is so backed up, if it's a small street, particularly if it's backed up both ways, you wonder how the ambulance or the fire truck is going to get to you when you're in need. That's a problem that we need to work on as fast as we can. Those are the things I just talked about. Okay, probably most revealing or most important from the leadership point of view, from your point of view, is 94% say the city is not doing enough. So we heard from the city manager what's happening, and from our new consultant what's been going on, residents either are unaware of all those things or don't think they're addressing the problems they face. So that's a solution that can only be addressed with more dialogue like we're having tonight. When asked what they recommended the city do to address the traffic problems, the most frequent answer was freeze development. This is not a new suggestion to this council. In fact, you've dealt with it over the years trying to mitigate the impact of development, but you've never really frozen it. It's a difficult thing to do, but you'll see later in some slides, with the increasing, with jobs increasing so dramatically in Silicon Valley and particularly in Palo Alto, you're never going to catch up unless you stop that bullet train going forward with more jobs. Also on the list, enforce existing traffic laws, and I applaud our new chief Johnson for reinstating the enforcement division. That's going to have a major impact as soon as we get more than two officers in that division. More police presence and ticketing, same thing. Use traffic cameras, problematic in some cases, but maybe look at new ways to use those cameras. And add public transit and shuttles. The council's tried to do that in the past, it has not been successful, we need to go back and redouble those efforts. So this is an article from the Mountain View paper from 2016, I believe, and if you just look at the jobs to housing ratio, Palo Alto is four times the average for Santa Clara County. Again, how can you catch up with that job growth? You cannot keep up with road infrastructure or with housing or other things that are difficult to manage and cost lots of money. So I think freezing or pausing development is one of the only viable steps you can take to actually make this problem start to get better. One of the projects that the staff talked about was Middlefield North, and that indeed is a success. And I would like to say right now, from the five years that I and my neighbors worked on this, we had one councilperson support us in that effort. And that councilperson is now Mayor Liz Ness. She was the only person who stood, came with us and tried to get this problem solved. That's the good news. The, and there's more good news too, because accidents are down, speeds are down, driver safety is up, pedestrian safety is up, bike safety is up, and all the residents feel like things are better. We're not afraid to walk on our sidewalks anymore. The thing that is a little disappointing is that it's taken five years to get here. We documented the four blocks with the highest accident rate in all of Palo Alto, and it took us five years to get that problem addressed. Okay. Now, there was a pilot. The pilot ended in June of 2018. In July, Alta Consulting, the city's consultant, issued a report to transportation staff documenting the results of the number of accidents and speed reductions, et cetera. That report still hasn't made it to your desks. I would like all of you to ask city management why that consulting report still hasn't presented, been presented to you four months after the study concluded. Here are my personal recommendations, and here I'm not speaking for 189 Crescent Park residents, I'm speaking only for myself. I do want you to freeze commercial development. I think unless you take that pause, you're not going to be able to ever hope for catching up with an accelerating problem. I want you to make safety the number one priority. It was on the city's slides, but it was not at the top of the list. It's got to be up there because that was what drove us on Middlefield to finally demand action from the city. I want you to stop granting any zoning exceptions. No in-leave fees, no, nothing that gives people the right to have more parking or not, parking spaces that are not allocated to their building. That should be a simple thing to do, you just have to be tough about it. Improve your data collection. We really, it's, you know, it's a little bit of an embarrassment in Palo Alto that we have such poor data. Most NPOs or metropolitan planning organizations use data and resident surveys to educate people in the neighborhood, in the city, and to work on solutions together. Topeka, Kansas can do this and we can't. That's an embarrassment. So we're going to try to help you do that. Residents are collecting surveys for resident views, that's the first step. The next thing maybe is to try to figure out which are the biggest concerns in all of Palo Alto, and then educate the public about how you might potentially address those concerns. Engage residents in the process. That's my final and maybe most important recommendation. Residents should be a resource to you. We're not the enemy, we want to work with you. Get us in the process as best you can and as quickly as you can, and see if we can accelerate some solution development. Thank you.
Thank you. You can, you'll see your names up here. Alan Akin, welcome. Followed by Yuriko Kishimoto and Peter Taskovich.
Hey guys, we've got a presentation ready.
I don't know how many we have, why'd you go for three for a while?
Hello, everyone. John is a tough act.
Welcome back.
Thank you. John is a tough act to follow, but I'll see what I can do. It's obvious that a lot of us feel that both council and staff have been out of touch with respect to traffic in the neighborhoods. What I'm going to try and do tonight is show you a little bit of data that I've gathered to help you understand that. This is a view from the roof of my house. I am both a hobbyist woodworker and a computer graphics guy, so I built a camera mount, put it on my roof, and I've written some software to do some traffic counting. At my house in Professorville, traffic has been going up steadily year after year since I started measuring it five years ago. It's on track to hit 6,000 cars a day next year, so much for a residential intersection. On the best days, the air quality index is unhealthy for sensitive groups. As a woodworker, I have a PM 2.5 meter, so I can actually measure this objectively. During commute hours, the average noise level's 80 dB, that's about the same as a garbage disposal, and it gets as high as 95. Here's what the traffic looks like around the clock. This is versus 2013. There is no hour of the day or night without traffic. I'd like you to note that for all hours except one, which I believe is one in the morning, traffic has gotten substantially worse over the past five years. Last June, residents near Addison School asked for a signal at Lincoln and Middlefield because of the surge in accidents there. My kids went to Addison, and I happened to watch one of those accidents occur while I was walking to my, walking my kids to school. And at my house, there have been two collisions just in the past month, one of those was an overturn. So that's not positive either. One of the reasons accidents are increasing is that the residential streets are overloaded with commuter and cut-through traffic. They're just not designed to handle this. And I'd like you to take a look at Lincoln Avenue. That's an 85% increase in traffic over the last five years. A few words on what to do. I hope it's obvious that just slowing down the rate at which things are getting worse is not going to be enough. The end result of that is going to be the destruction of the neighborhoods. I think the first thing to do is measure neighborhood traffic impacts regularly and make that data public. People have been asking for this for years, and we know how to do it. I think it's the obvious next step. Am I up to three minutes already?
So if you could finish up also, if you can leave us your material, that would be helpful.
Yep. Second thing to do is tie development to measurable goals. You have leverage before a project is approved, that's the time to use it. I suggest adding zoning rules that require traffic levels below designated thresholds at designated intersections before approving projects. Let's eliminate the current system, which is privatizing the benefits and socializing the costs.
Thank you. Yuriko, greetings. Former Mayor Kishimoto.
Thank you, Mayor Ness and honorable members of the council. Well, thank you for tackling this difficult topic. So as you say, my name is Yuriko Kishimoto, former mayor and city council member. I was also the co-chair of the Transportation Committee for the 1995 Comp Plan, so I've always been involved at looking at Palo Alto comprehensively, also Addison Traffic Safety rep and many other roles. I also live in Professorville on Embarcadero, so yes, from many years ago, I've noticed the traffic in Palo Alto. But I quickly learned that often some short-term solutions lead to worse problems elsewhere. And you do, as the presentation noted, you have to look at things comprehensively and long-term, and that does go back to the Comp Plan. So I'm so glad that you started with that. So I'd start with three must-dos. You know, the first is reduce, and you've heard that from the first speaker. So congestion doesn't just appear from nowhere, it comes from demand, and so we have to reduce the demand either by capping development or reducing the impacts, reducing any induced traffic, especially east-west, I think that's what we can control. Second is understand where people are coming and why, and the picture that I draw for myself is about, half of it is about regional commute traffic, and that you address through Caltrain supply side, demand side through TMAs and demand side management, charging for parking. And then the other half is us, actually, all of us here in Palo Alto. So it's local traffic that we can control. Many of us have to drive, but many of us can walk and bike. I mean, those who are, knock on wood, healthy enough to walk and bike can stay healthier by actually walking and biking more. And I've been a longtime champion for making sure that that happens. Third is, I agree with also the first speaker, that the priority is always safety, especially pedestrian safety. Traffic calming is core to getting people out of their vehicles and walking to the buses to whatever. So I would just end with, I would love to see an expansion of our fantastic Safe Routes to, for schools and make it Safe Routes for All. Thank you very much.
Peter Taskovich, then Mark Nadeem and Peter Knopf.
Hello, my name is Peter Taskovich, I'm a over-50-year resident of the city. Traffic has always been an issue. I mean, when I was growing up in the 70s, it was still a big issue, and it hasn't gone away. I just want to be briefly what needs to be done. First, I think developers have to develop, we can't just say close all development, but what we need no more of is commercial office development. We need to basically, we have enough office development in our city, and we don't need more of it. And then, instead of developers developing that, we should encourage them to develop housing, maybe rezone, commercial zones, do housing, residential zones, multi-family residential. So instead of building more office buildings, they can build up condos and apartments. And also, we may be encouraged to retail, because we, our main traffic problem, to be honest, is commuter traffic. And it's caused by the job-housing imbalance, and actually not even the housing imbalance, it's caused by the jobs, all the jobs which are here in Palo Alto, and commuters have to commute from their homes. And so we need to focus on solutions that address that. And the other things I, you suggested, Mayor Ness, about things you might not look at. Improve our rail transportation, not just Caltrain, but why can't maybe look at VTA expanding the light rail from Mountain View into Palo Alto, the Dunbar and Bridge corridor? And if, you know, high-speed rail is ever built up in the peninsula, which is the big if, make sure that there is a station. if, make sure that there is a station here in Palo Alto. So, commuters who might be living in the Central Valley can take a high-speed rail into Palo Alto if it's ever built. The other thing that we have to focus on is the neighborhood traffic excursion. Interesting about the data, about the east-west data that showed rising only 7% from 1965 until now, that's understandable, because those roads, I think they measured, Embarcadero, Oregon Expressway, Charleston, already at capacity, close to capacity in 1960. Again, traffic has always been bad, that's why we built Oregon Expressway back in the 60s. Those were already in capacity. Traffic has increased, but now that traffic has increased into residential roads. California Avenue, Loma Verde, East Meadow, Colorado Avenue. That's why it only shows 7%, because those roads are already at capacity. And then you see great traffic incursion. So, that should be the other focus, is getting traffic back out into the streets. And also, increasing bus lines, I want to mention that. Private buses, you know, like how Google does it, or VTA or Samtram buses. Our bus service has gone down since the 1980s. We have less VTA service now than we had back in the 1980s. It has to grow up back to that level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Nadeem and then Peter Knopf.
Good evening. Mark Nadeem, Alexis Drive. I live in the Palo Alto Hills neighborhood, and most people don't think about the traffic that we have over there. People think that we are immune from the traffic congestion. We have only two routes to get to El Camino Real, and that is Alexis, that is Arastodero and Page Mill. And these two routes normally are backed up until about 10:30 in the morning. So, I can't leave home to go to El Camino until about 10:00 or 10:30. And then I have to get, when coming back home, I have to come back home by 2:30, otherwise the traffic will be horrible. So, most of this traffic is for Stanford Research Park, and most of it is single occupancy vehicle. We need to have some shuttles, buses, whatever, to reduce that number of cars that are coming from 280 to Palo Alto. The other, on Arastodero, a lot of the traffic as well comes from the schools. And a lot of these kids, they are coming from the hills or west of Fort Worth Expressway. They're just too scared to take a bike, ride a bike, because it's not safe. There are not that many, the roads are too, just too narrow. And it is scary to take a bike. I wouldn't let, I wouldn't let my kids take a bike, ride a bike to school on a very narrow Arastodero. So, hopefully, we can do something about this issue. Mainly, it's the traffic that, from Stanford Research Park. If we have the buses, shuttles, that would alleviate a majority of these issues. Thank you.
Peter Knopf, Greg Welch and Pat Boone.
My name is Peter Knopf. My comments are directed towards the Charleston-Aristodero corridor. As a resident of Baron Park who regularly uses the Coulom access to Aristodero Road, I have witnessed the increasing traffic constriction and slowdown due to the experimental and now approved improvements to the corridor. I do not agree that traffic constriction is constructive progress to the solving Palo Alto's traffic problems. I personally find it nearly impossible to enter the Aristodero Road during commute hours of 7:30 to 9:00 AM and 3:00 to 6:00 PM. As a suggestion, I'd recommend changes to balance traffic calming with efficient traffic flow, instead of the emphasis on calming which leads to road rage. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Greg Welch.
An earlier speaker this evening talked about traffic being the tip of the iceberg. But remember, it's the tip that indicates that there's a big problem beneath the surface. And I think that what we're looking at here is not just about traffic, it's actually about what is Palo Alto? What is happening to this community? And I would submit to you that the real problem is that Palo Alto is becoming a corporate office park, not a town. According to U.S. Census, since 2011 to 2017, the population in Palo Alto increased only 4%. During the same period, however, the number of people who work in Palo Alto, which was already larger than the total population in 2011, exploded by over 25%. Now, we could say that's a regional problem, but it's not. It's a direct result of development policy in Palo Alto. If you look at the California Employment Development Statistics, you see that the number of jobs in Palo Alto exploded at twice the rate of the San Mateo and Santa Clara background and the larger Silicon Valley area, and at nearly twice the rate of the state as a whole. This is a local problem, it is not attributable to just background economic expansion. That lopsided development is swamping the residents. Commute traffic is clogging residential streets, in direct contrast to the city's own comprehensive More housing isn't going to fix this. In fact, while the population of employed Palo Altons expanded 5% between 2011 and 2017, those who work within the city actually shrank by 7%. So, unless the city can somehow impose a requirement that if you live here, you also must work here, simply adding new housing is probably going to make the problem even TMAs help, but they're not fixing it either. They're merely improving on a bad situation. The good news is that growth in alternative of signal occupancy trips has increased. But it's increased on a rising tide. The bad news is the inbound commute car traffic still grew at 25%. What do the residents of Palo Alto need? First, and you've heard it from other speakers, if you're in a hole, the first step is to stop digging. We need a moratorium on office space expansion. I'll leave the rest of my comments for this presentation, which I will submit for the public record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Joe Hirsch.
Pat Boone.
Pat, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council for putting this together, the staff for your, for the detail reporter, really appreciate it tremendously, and what a great opportunity to be here at this moment. I'm Pat Boone, I'm a candidate for city council, many people know that. I got a question before I use up my time here. How many members from the business community are here that have over 100 employees? Raise your hands. Okay, perfect. Are there any people here from any other municipalities, other cities, adjacent cities to Palo Alto? Okay, we have a few. Are you elected officials, residents? That's good enough. I believe that this meeting is good, but it should not be the only one. I appreciate the fact that Madam Mayor put this together along with council wanted to do that, but I think what we heard from the first speaker is that we don't feel as though there's effectiveness coming from city council. Transportation has always been one thing I've been speaking of since I came out there as a citizen activist here in Palo Alto. So, I believe we need to come up with a plan that really gets results. Listening is great, but feeling as though there's something being done, that's the most important factor that residents want to know. So, there's my, here's my suggestions. I believe that we need to bring more businesses and municipalities to the table when we talk to these meetings. I believe we need to have more of these meetings in place. I believe that we need to have a transportation chief on the job ASAP. I believe that we need to halt commercial development. I believe that we need to come up with resolutions and come up with a timetable that can answer these questions quickly to give the results that's needed. Talk is good, but also, there's an old saying called, "Talk is cheap, results are everything." And I believe that should be what we stand for here in Palo Alto. We are the beginning of the greatest innovation that exists on the planet Earth. Why is it that we can't get from City Hall down to Aristodero in 15 minutes? That's ridiculous. We need to take the positive steps that are important to flow our city the way it is. This is not brain science. We have the technology and we have the know-how. Talking and working together is going to be important. And lastly, and this is most importantly, we really need to work together versus pointing fingers at each other. I'll give you a perfect example. After the mayor made a misspoke, she apologized. Let's move on. Let's not talk about how we dislike someone for not, or dislike an organization, or dislike something for how it's not being done. We are one Palo Alto. We can't fix this problem if we're going in different directions. We have to fix this problem if we work together. And that's going to be the most important factor, and that's why I'm running for city council. But that's most importantly why I'm a resident of Palo Alto. One Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Joe Hirsch.
Council members, I agree in part what Pat just said. He talked about having more meetings, particularly with the business people in the area. I would support having more meetings with the residents in the area. Local meetings, not a meeting like this. This is fine to get the ball rolling. But we need things where you get a Crescent Park meeting, you get a Baron Park meeting, you get a Green Acres 1 and 2 meeting, where we really, the residents, have a chance to have input into the city, where the city staff and their consultants are listening to us, are talking with us, are meeting with us. My concern, like others, is Aristodero and Charleston. It's a mess. Started a long time ago. I think all of us have to admit, many of us were asleep at the switch. It is now a bottleneck. Someone said we have to reduce bottlenecks. It seems to us and many in the area that the city is in fact creating bottlenecks. Aristodero-Charleston is an excellent example. I noticed the list of streets that were put on with regard to the emails and communications that came in from Aristodero people. My street, Georgia, where I live, I wrote numerous emails, as do others, regarding the bulbouts that are being built or considered. My street was not listed. I gave an oral communication here on August 20th about the topic. I wrote you, since time was short that night, I wrote council the very next day on August 21st. On August 27th, I got an email back saying, "It's under internal review." Guess what? The first bulbout is going up at Pomona and Aristodero today. There was no internal review that expanded out to the residents in the area to hear our concerns about a road that is not a pedestrian thoroughfare, is a vehicular thoroughfare. Why do we have bottlenecks? Because the city has systematically reduced the capacity of that road to one lane, occasionally two, then back to one. Some gentleman spoke about not being able to use the road during various hours. That is true. So, what do we do? We take the mayor's suggestion, we use alternative routes. What are those streets? Neighborhood streets. What street in particular? Maybell, a safe route to school, where the kids are biking all the time, T and 4 abreast. That's not the way the city should be run. We need more local meetings before anything is done. We do not need another Ross Road design, build and defend. And that's exactly where we are right now with regard to Aristodero Road.
Eva Gal, Justine Burt and Carol Scott.
I'd like to continue where Joe left off.
Pull your mic down a little bit.
Okay. I live on Donald Drive. I've lived there for almost 49 years, and needless to say, I've seen a lot of changes. I have to say that the presentation at the beginning, at the beginning of this meeting was very helpful, because I have learned what has not happened, in my area at least. Bottlenecks have not been reduced, safe routes are not safe, enhanced crosswalk treatments have not enhanced the crosswalks, and capital improvements have done nothing but slow traffic. The bumpout on Pomona is obscene. That's the only word, and I would invite all of you, every single one of you, to visit that bumpout, because it is dangerous. We were never notified about the improvements on Donald, along Aristodero corridor. The two-feet reduction, I'm assuming it's one foot on each side, which means nothing. I have spent hours watching traffic to and from school. The buses are too wide right now to go on Donald Drive from Donald to Turman. So, if you reduce that by one or two feet or more, probably four feet, you are completely encroaching on the traffic. Kids are barely missed, cars are barely missed, it's a nightmare. At this point, I have to say, what we requested was to stop construction until you met with us. None of you, well, two people have met with us. Eric Filseth and Lydia Koo have taken the time to come and talk to us. As a former educator, I would give every one of you an F right now in terms of communication, in terms of responsiveness, and in terms of awareness of what our community needs. It, I would strongly urge you to put a halt to these bumpouts until your staff has an opportunity to personally meet with us and try it out. I have to compliment Mr. Shiketa for putting out those temporary mockups of bumpouts. That's the only responsiveness I have seen to date in terms of trying things out. You have spent million, I would say, close to millions of dollars on Aristodero, going from four lanes to three and a half lanes to three lanes, and you have achieved nothing but increased traffic. Horrible, horrible, nightmarish conditions. I have to, in order for my house, which is about the first half of Donald, in order for me to get to Aristodero or to further down El Camino, I have to take Maybell. It takes me longer, it takes me less time to go take a hugely roundabout than to go directly. So, please, do better on your marks, take away your Fs, hold the construction until you have a chance to meet with us and really learn what it's like to live in that area from our own front yard and from your perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Justine Burt, Carol Scott and Tahera Paratcha.
Good evening, Mayor Ness and city council members. My name's Justine Burt. I do sustainability consulting, and I specialize in behavior change. I've been helping the Transportation Management Association educate people about alternative transportation options and give out free transit passes, and I can't tell you the number of times people have called me an angel. They thank me for helping them. I am optimistic that there is so much more we can do to get people out of their single occupancy vehicles. As you know, 5,500 people drive into University Avenue every day, and then they have to try to park somewhere, and it's really disruptive to the people who work in the shops and restaurants to have to move their car every two hours. So, the waitresses who have four tickets, parking tickets from the month, are so grateful to get that Clipper card. I know people complain about the fact that there aren't enough alternative transportation options, but there are 12 that come into the downtown transit center between buses and shuttles and the Caltrain. There are also e-bikes, bicycles, e-scooters. And of all the people I talked to, about half of them cannot take alternative transportation for a whole bunch of really good reasons, but a lot of them still can. And so, I'm looking for the people who can take one mode of transportation to get to downtown and complement it with a first and last mile option. So, thank you so much for allocating parking fees as revenue to pay for the free transit passes. People really appreciate it, and it's also fiscally responsible. It's dramatically cheaper than a $30 million parking garage downtown. So, what I want to encourage you to look for are, I think there are four really great options to get more people out of their cars. And the first one has to do with, most people just And the first one has to do with, most people just don't know what the options are to get here. I talked to a guy who works at the Verizon store downtown, and he said, "Oh, I'd love to take transit. I can't. I live in Hayward." And I explained that if he drives to the Union City Bart Station, there's plenty of parking. Dunbarton Express runs right over here to the Transit Center. He said, "I had no idea. I'll take it Monday." Number two, helping people with barriers. Just today, I took a flat tire, somebody's bicycle tire that was flat, to Palo Alto Bicycles. And I bought him a new inner tube, and now he can bike the two miles to the Caltrain station in Redwood City and get here on the Caltrain pass. The third thing, protected bike lanes. Europe has them in every major city. I don't know why we don't do protected bike lanes here. They're not $1 million a mile, as I keep hearing from transportation consultants. A lot of them are $10,000 to $20,000 per mile. And finally, encourage Caltrains to put a top coat on that two and a half mile stretch of access road on the east side of the Dunbarton Bridge. There are so many people who live in Fremont, Union City, and Newark who would like to be able to bike over here, but they can't because that miserable road is so uncomfortable. It just needs a top coat. That's all it needs. So again, I think there's so much more we can do in terms of behavior change, and thank you for the opportunity.
Carol Scott, and then Tahera, Tahera maybe, Paratcha. Carol Scott.
Good evening to the mayor and members of the city council. I have only three small points. First, I'd like to second John Gussland's suggestion that we put safety as the number one issue in the city. If we think about safety, not just congestion, I think we'll come up with a number of other areas in the city that need some attention. And in particular, there is an intersection in my neighborhood of Evergreen Park that has a self-inflicted safety problem. And self-inflicted, I mean by decisions that we've made in the city. And that is the intersection that runs Park Boulevard, where Park Boulevard then over by Page Mill Road, where you can make a turn, go under the overpass to reach Oregon Expressway going towards the freeway. That intersection, these are tiny little streets. Huge development projects in the area have brought enormous numbers of people. In addition, you have, Park Boulevard has a bike lane, is one of the key biking paths in the city. And fortunately, we have a lot more bikers, but more bikers plus more people plus more cars equals pretty much a disaster many times of the day. So when Page, when Oregon Expressway is backed up, it means that even though we have a light there at that intersection, no one's getting through the intersection because there's nowhere to go on Oregon Expressway. When you move down Park Boulevard, the cars are supposed to move right to get to that little part where you can go under the overpass. Bike people are supposed to go left. This is a very dangerous dance that happens when the two needs to cross paths. So I would encourage us to take a look at safety on intersections as well as congestion. Second, I think, I don't have a magic bullet for traffic in this city, and I don't have a magic bullet for congestion, but I know that we're doing a lot to ourselves already. And a lot of it stems from the decision-making in our current city staff. And I would say current, not future, so I'm aware that we have a new city manager coming on board, and so we may be able to make some changes here. But we have a tendency to make all of our decisions in the silo. Each construction project is evaluated on its own, not for whatever else is going on around it. We seem to forget half the time that Stanford is also doing a lot of construction work. We need to take into account the number of construction vehicles coming to the city for Stanford, and then also what other construction is happening in a neighborhood before a project is approved. We seem to have forgotten that most construction projects should have their own loading zones. When delivery trucks have to block a lane to make deliveries because the project was built without a loading zone, that contributes to traffic. When there's not enough parking in a building, it means that lots of people are circling. This creates traffic. All of these are self-inflicted wounds because we simply make decisions in a silo and we haven't taken a more global approach to our issues here. So I'm very hopeful and I'm optimistic that we have a new city manager coming on board who will find a way to make that coordinated decision-making happen. And finally, I'd like to encourage the city council to provide the funding and the support that our city staff needs. I'm always impressed by how gracious they are, even though they're very shorthanded and they have many, many citizens asking them for information and responses.
Thank you for coming.
What we need to do to be sure that we have adequate staff and adequate budget there is very important.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to say a few words. I've been hearing all evening about public safety as priority, and I couldn't agree with that more. I live on Poe Street, which is just off Bryant, and I'm up and down Bryant Street several times a day. And each time that I drive down, I fear a near mishap as I drive through the intersecting streets. Whereas in, for example, on Weberly and Everett, when I go past there, I feel much safer because there are four-way stop signs there. And there are none on Bryant Street. You only have the two stop signs on the intersecting streets, but not on, you know, the intersecting streets when people are coming through, they are just, sometimes they don't stop. And there have been near mishaps and even sometimes accidents. So a quick and cheap solution, and I would really recommend, is to install four-way stop signs on all these downtown streets to avoid impending disasters. It's not rocket science, and will make it safer for all. So please, let's make this happen.
Nielsen Buchanan.
Good morning or good afternoon, good evening, council. This is going to be a long haul journey to figure out what we want to do next. I don't want to talk about any particular problem or any particular solution tonight. I really want to talk about the next six months. And I have a great appreciation that there's a big changeover in the council coming. The senior staff is regrouping and will be reorganizing and is going to need some breathing time. So I'm thinking about what would I wish could happen in the next six months. And I would break it into some segments. I think the next couple of months, quite frankly, we need to give us much free time for staff to regroup, think, listen to all of this, prioritize. We've got holidays in the midst of all that, and it's not as if the staff doesn't have stuff to do anyway. There's budget issues underway that cloud the issues, to say the least. We need to be careful what we pile on. I think if you took a big breath right now, and I've been in the audience listening, and I've actually been looking up at the lights. And if you look up real quickly, there are a lot of lights up there. There are many solutions in front of us as there are lights that are lit. And that's, very quickly, you can conclude that's more than can be done. So my hope is that the new council and the new city senior staff is going to take a look at all the ideas of new and old. And during the next six months, take a look at what's viable, what's funded, and what's doable. And then sort those out. Eliminate the ones that can't be done. There's no sense talking about high-speed rail. That's so far off in the distance, if ever. It's not a meaningful thing. I want to, I'd like to see a plan presented in six months that has to do with the next three years of viable. It's not a perfect plan, but what can be done over the next six months. And the next six months rolls around the first day of April. So happens that's a Monday. And I urge you to reconvene the study session process with a staff report of what can be done, what is going to be funded over the next three years, so we all have something to look forward to that's viable. It's good to talk about TDMs, but if you can't find the TDMs, you've already enacted. It's not something that could be a high priority, but maybe it is. So that's a process I recommend and offer that to you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Nadia Naik, and then Michael Fuerer and Anne Lunis.
Good evening. I'm going to throw out some ideas just at random and then give you a couple of words. So the rail committee wants some traffic data. The RPP wants traffic data. The TMA wants traffic data. Is it possible to save some money and have one shared assessment of traffic at the same time? I would just throw that out there. Can we look to existing partners in the community like the TMA or the Downtown Association, which has the contract to manage the garages as a potential resource? Can we look to those partners to see how we can share the load as staff take stock? Because clearly, we have a pause here. Can we hire a temporary traffic engineer to help us take stock and prioritize? I support charging for short-term parking as a resident. I think it's important to say that, especially in the downtown area. I thought this was actually decided several years ago, and it just sort of petered out. Maybe it's something we need to bring back. And finally, because I wasn't going to go through without talking about rail, I wanted to say that we need your leadership. Over the last 10 years, we have changed a number of environmental laws and land use laws that have changed how we grow. We have transit-oriented development, transit demand management, and we need to focus, we're focused more on growing densely around transit areas. But we now need to focus on transit. Palo Alto has the second highest Caltrain ridership outside of San Francisco. And at rush hour, Caltrain is the equivalent of two lanes of traffic on the 101 in each direction. So when we talk about congestion, Caltrain is really a big focus. And I know that the council's well aware of this, but I wanted to be sure that the residents in the audience actually understand. And I hope that the residents in the audience that are worried about traffic also think about the issue of separating the train from the roads, which is known as grade separations. As you heard tonight, it's a main part of reducing congestion. In 2009, when high-speed rail was being contemplated, our city council took a really big leadership role in showing up at the state level. Actually, we had our lobbyists working on the national level. We need to sort of do that again. This isn't just about getting funding for grade separations and helping our economy regionally. It'll help everybody, but most specifically, it'll help Palo Altons. And I hope that we can return to having that level of focus on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Fuerer, Anne Lunis, and Arthur Keller.
Good evening, and thank you. I just wanted to give you a...
If you pull that mic way up.
A view from University Avenue. Just anecdotally, to get here, out of our driveway, I had to squeeze between two cars on the roadway, let Margaret out of the car so she could walk across the street to signal that I could turn left. In other words, it's a quality-of-life problem for people like me on University Avenue. When we came here in the early 80s, things were very nice. It was a pleasant community. Now, a lot has gone wrong. For one thing, we can't, we rarely go to see our friends across the road. It's difficult. And we no longer go to the opera in San Francisco. It takes half an hour to get from our house to 101. Of course, you've heard how bad things are. We also apparently are some loggerheads, although I hope not, with people on the side streets feeding into University Avenue. Because of course, their interest is to get us, get everybody out to University itself. And our interest in some cases, in my case in particular, is it makes it very difficult to get back into my house if I can't use one of the side streets. It's a logistical nightmare. I've had to occasionally park my car somewhere else and walk home, which I guess is not all that bad, but then I'd have to get it the next morning. And minor things, I don't know whether heavy trucks are allowed now on University, although there is a sign on 101 shooing them off. At night, we have a few other things. We of course have to sleep there on University Avenue. And there are some people who just love to make a lot of noise, just on purpose, driving by on some, I don't know what vehicles they're using. And of course, going very fast, which is not a problem most of the time. So help us, please. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anne Lunis, Arthur Keller, Jeff Greenfield.
Hi, I've lived here for 24 years. I live on Center Drive between University and Hamilton. My street is a cut-through. And basically, it's a one-way street that has turned into a parking lot during evening, weekday commuter time. And in the morning, it is a race to get kids to school and downtown to the office. There are many evenings when I literally cannot get into my driveway. I can no longer get off on University Avenue. I work in San Jose. I have to drive to Oregon, go through Greer, and it takes me about 15 minutes to get to my house. And then on many evenings, I cannot get onto Center. And so I park either at Party Park or park somewhere where I can park. I've taken to driving up the wrong side of the street, hopefully the police are not going to arrest me, on many evenings because the traffic is so backed up to make the right-hand turn from Center onto University, and I just don't want to wait an hour to get into my driveway. It's dangerous, noisy, you've heard all of that. The excessive commercial development is definitely a root cause. That's not something that is going to be resolvable in the near future. We put together a proposal that we submitted on May 29th. Lydia Koo came to the first meeting at my home about a year ago, where the residents of Crescent Park came one evening. We all worked on a proposal. We submitted it May 29th. We heard from Josh Mello, who was actually seemingly going to help us. Since then, there's been absolutely no communication. We have a number of, and we should resubmit our proposal, a roundabout at five corners. It is one of the most dangerous intersections in probably all of Palo Alto. We've asked for a roundabout. We were told we were going to get a roundabout. We asked for traffic flow support and curb extensions on Hamilton. Two pots were hastily put on Hamilton and Middlefield in parking spots. I don't know what they're doing there. They're just sitting there on the side of the road. You know, I feel like getting there and moving them into the middle of the road, but there are no lines to prohibit me from getting killed. We've asked for local traffic-only signs. We have a whole list of proposals, and we'd like to resubmit our proposal, please. But honestly, this is getting to be a little tiresome, where we come forth, we provide proposals, we write letters, we have Palo Alto weekly comments. And thanks for having us here today, but honestly, it's time for some action.
Thank you. Arthur Keller, Jeff Greenfield, Becky Sanders.
So I spent several hours last night gathering census data. And I looked at, I'm going to give you some data from the five-year American Community Survey from the U.S. Census Bureau. And I'm comparing 2005 through 2009 against 2012 to 2016. So during that, comparing those two periods, the drive-alone rates, single occupancy vehicles commuting into Palo Alto went down by 3%. Yay! Unfortunately, the number of employees went up by 23%, and number of single occupancy vehicles total went up by 17%. So we made a little bit of progress, but we got a lot worse because we got a lot more jobs than the reduction in single occupancy vehicles. We have TDM plans that we've been collecting for years. They're not on any website. They're not published. They're not enforced. That's the first thing we need to do, publish and enforce the TDM plans. The next thing is that San Antonio Road. We did a nice thing to San Antonio Road drivers. We coordinated the signals. However, the problem is that made Charleston crossing of San Antonio Road a lot worse. I used to be able to get through Fabian and then San Antonio Road on two lights. Now it takes three because Charleston is not coordinated. And the time it takes to cross San Antonio Road has, the time allowed for crossing San Antonio Road has decreased. Some years ago, I actually take credit for initiating the bike bridge over 101 by Adobe Creek. We had a plan for that that was a nice, attractive bridge. The problem is somehow we decided it was too expensive, and we canceled the idea of an attractive bridge. We're now going to...
We're now going to spend a lot more money for utilitarian bridge. We should have gone ahead with it while we could and built it. The idea of reduced parking doesn't actually work to eliminate cars. I've looked at the census data over this period. Consistently, 7% of households have no cars. 3% of owner-occupied households have no cars. 11% of renter households have no cars. No change over these last number of years. No change. No trend change. We also have a reduced amount of, we have an increased trend of more people shoved into the same-sized buildings. So while the data from the traffic engineer shows an increase of 5,000 jobs, it's actually been an increase of 8,000 jobs. The other additional 3,000 is from more people crammed into the same-sized building. Chase Bank is planning to build a building in the Research Park. 10 acres, 177,000 square feet, 1,000 employees, but only 598 parking spaces. And that 598 parking spaces is based on the assumption of one per 250 square feet, and that may not be accurate. And finally, I want to talk about one thing that was mentioned in the Mercury News by Mr. Rhodes Show, and that is there's an experiment going on in which there are yellow, solid-yellow left-turn lights. And this way, cars, instead of having to wait for the whole cycle to go through, and instead of having a permissive left turn where they can turn anytime, have a solid yellow, which means they are really aware that it's a caution to go through. And that has sometimes increased traffic for people turning left in certain circumstances where traffic isn't too bad. So that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Greenfield, Becky Saunders, Allison Marsden.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Traffic is a complex problem, and any true solution will be multifaceted and complex. I'm here to voice support for our bike infrastructure and traffic calming plans with a focus on safety. We know that residential and working populations will continue to grow. Ultimately, the cornerstone of any solution will not be increasing throughput from more cars. We're already maxed out. And as long as our older generation's love affair for the automobile continues, we're going to suffer gridlock. The key lies in alternatives: trains, including grade separation, shuttles, car sharing, walking, scootering, and biking. And we need special focus on safety and traffic calming. Younger demographics get this already. One clear indication of this is the pervasive lack of interest and priority for today's youth to get a driver's license at age 16 or even 18. Palo Alto's biking culture and infrastructure is one of our community gems. Over 4,000 students bike to school every day. This means over 10,000 traffic trips, when you consider to-school and from-school, pick-up and drop, in the morning and the afternoon. This is car trips that are off of the road because of our biking programs. Enthused by countless other communities, this is healthy, it's social, and it significantly reduces roadway congestion. This didn't just happen. It required endless hours of community and planning and nurturing. We need to work out the details. We need to work together. Yes, the recent Ross Road Bike Boulevard rollout has been problematic. We call a spade a spade. But just because the implementation of a project is problematic doesn't mean the project concept is a bad idea. This happens sometimes, and we can all reflect on examples of this. Staff's working to make improvements, as we've heard in the Charleston-Arsztadero corridor presentation. We need to improve our processes, but please have the wisdom and patience to recognize the difference between poor implementation and a bad idea. Please continue to vigorously support our bike infrastructure and traffic calming projects. Our comp plan and S-CAP mandates this, and this is an important and obvious component of any solution to our congestion woes. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Saunders, Allison Marsden, Liz Gardner.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members. As co-chair of Palo Alto Neighborhoods and the moderator of the Ventura Neighborhood Association, I can attest that traffic is of utmost concern to the majority of our stakeholders in both groups. So everyone is up in arms about traffic. So we thank you very much for having this meeting this evening. Personal data point: Last week, it took me 20 minutes to get 1.3 miles down to El Camino from my house to Dr. Tim's dental office. I was tempted to cut through Evergreen, skulking through the traffic barricades where I could have saved 10 minutes. But I'm making a concerted effort not to cut through neighborhoods, because I so tire of the cars and commuter buses now racing through Ventura by my house. Everyone else tonight has said so many great things, so I want to roll along and keep the ball rolling. First, remember that millennials and young people don't stay young and millennial forever. They do change. I have two millennial kids in my household, and they are both dependent on their cards for work. Public transit would take one of them 1.75 hours each way, using now multiple transfers. And one uses tools that are too heavy for her bike, so must use a car. Their friends also, I've noticed, are having children. And I've noticed that these young parents tend to drive their children around in cars. So unless we get millennials to sign a waiver not to procreate, I don't think that promulgating the myth that millennials don't want to drive has any basis in reality. Approving underparked buildings and unparked buildings also, I think, is based on wishful thinking. So yes, we take transit, walk, bike, so many times we do, but so many times, people don't and never do. Many people will still drive, and particularly in Ventura, and I guess poor in Crescent Park now, they will fill a block after block with their cars, as happens all over Ventura and a lot of Palo Alto. So we also, Ventura has eight developments coming its way. That is a major gulp. If these buildings provide inadequate parking, where will our spill-over traffic go? I have a pretty good idea. So also, I just want to say that, for me, I would really focus on commuter buses, because I know that, gosh, Google and Facebook use them, so they must work. So what if we had one of those meetings where we got the businesses together and sent people into Stanford Research Park and down Cal Ave and all the other places where there's last 1 and 1/2 to 2 or 3 miles where people need to go? Or have those satellite parking spaces, parking lots out there in the country, and have the people bus in. Buses are cheaper than new garages, and it's hard to believe that the city is serious about reducing traffic and greenhouse gases, when the number of commuter buses that the city has set up is really, I think it's zero. So we'll know you're finally serious about solving our transportation problems when the commuter buses start rolling in. And yes, in my study on Margarita, I see a white commuter bus coming twice a day now, and they don't always stop at the four-way stop sign, not even the commuter bus. So if we could add "please" to every stop sign in the city of Palo Alto with sugar on it, I think we could maybe make some inroads there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Allison Marsden, Liz Gardner, and Elizabeth Greenfield.
Thank you. I'm Allison Marsden. I'm a resident of Stanford, but I'm a mother of two children in the Palo Alto School District at Escondido and at Green Middle School. I'm a faculty at Stanford, and I live and work and bike on campus. I'm here to speak in support of funding, maintaining, and increasing the Safe Routes to School program, which enables thousands of PAUSD children, including my own, to safely bike to school each day, and it reduces our community's collective impact on the environment. Safe Routes to School is one of the most impactful, tangible actions that our community is currently taking, collectively taking, to combat climate change. Given the recent sobering report of the U.N. Scientific Panel and the inaction of the federal government, our only choice is to act locally on this issue. Safe Routes has enabled my family to commute entirely carbon-free, with three of us on bike or foot and one in an electric car. The Safe Routes program enables 4,000 children each day to ride their bikes to school, significantly reducing our community's carbon footprint. It also, Safe Routes also fosters health and independence in our children. It encourages daily exercise and promotes health. It fosters independence. My own daughter, who's in 8th grade at Green, now rides her bike around town. She rides her bike to meet her friends. She gets herself out the door in the morning on time by herself without prompting from me. It also fosters school readiness in the morning, with kids arriving ready to learn. It fosters kids' connection to their community. My daughter now routinely frequents stores on California Avenue on her way home, on her bike, with her friends. She's interacting with kids from our neighborhood that she bikes with. It encourages kids to ride bikes as a matter of habit, reducing overall car trips and not just the school commute. To maintain safety, Safe Routes requires a critical mass of students. I feel safe as a parent, knowing that my daughter is riding her bike in a pack of kids that are highly visible. I would feel much less safe if she was riding alone. We need to keep and use our protected bike lanes to keep kids safe. Safe Routes also improves my family's quality of life. It makes our morning logistics less frantic, I dare say even enjoyable. It enables me to ride my bike to work, since I now don't have to get in the car for driving kids to school. So its impact is broader than just the trips kids take to and from school. We spent a number of years living in Southern California, where we did not have this type of program. We spent a lot of time in the car each day. We had four extra car trips each day compared to now. This program has changed our quality of life for the better, and it's a jewel of our community. I urge you to increase support for the program, stay the course, and implement the bicycle and pedestrian projects that have been approved. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Liz Gardner, Elizabeth Greenfield, and Megan Khan or Khan.
Hi. I just wanted to let you know, I did bike down here from Midtown, and I'm here tonight to address a very critical need in creating complete streets. In Palo Alto, complete streets are streets designed and they operate to enable safe use and support mobility for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and public transportation riders, truckers, and motorists. Complete streets will make our city a bikable and importantly, a breathable city. This planned type of street, it invites the cohabitation of all residents and commuters. And we, as a city, have the opportunity now to integrate all transportation demands for the ease and safety of our schoolchildren, our seniors, our families, all residents, commerce, commuters, and workers, meaning all those who live here and all those who enter our city limits for work, school, and leisure. The Safe Routes to School program has been an entirely vital community leader in the promotion, planning, implementation, and maintenance of moving people safely around Palo Alto. The Zero Emissions Goals Palo Alto has embraced and is working towards. These types of complete streets will fulfill the reduction of emissions and still connect us safely to, well, everything that's important to us in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth Greenfield, Megan Khan or Khan, and David Cole.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Greenfield, and I have lived in Palo Alto for most of my life. And one thing I value about my childhood here is the amount of traffic in the city, bike traffic, that is. We all know transportation is a significant influencer of mental, physical, and planetary health. With a sustainability and quality-of-life lens, and as a young person that hopes to never own a car, and who currently bike commutes to work 7 miles each way, I support addressing traffic by making driving harder and more expensive, and other modes easy, cheap, and safe. I would like to highlight key points of the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. As of 2015, transportation is 65% of Palo Alto's greenhouse gas emissions. Your goal is, our goal, is to lower emissions from 1990 levels by 80% by 2030. And this requires significant changes to all of our mobility behaviors. As a result, the S-CAP recommends, quote, "making it more convenient not to drive," end quote, and, quote, "shifting subsidies from free parking to support non-single occupancy vehicle travel," end quote. Page 9. I appreciate this dual approach of introducing both carrots and sticks, which is essential to get people out of their cars and make it safe and comfortable to engage in other modes. When I hear people say that traffic is a problem, I think of this cartoon depicting gridlock with speech bubbles from everyone saying, "I wish everyone else stayed home today." Traffic isn't the enemy here. We are. At some point, traffic must be so miserable that people will consider other options. Working to shift local trips from SOV to alternative modes is lucrative, low-hanging fruit. The biggest determinants of transportation mode choice are time and cost and safety. Making driving take more time than other modes and parking always costs money, while improving bike safety and infrastructure is important to meet our sustainability goals. In addition, parking strategies, including dynamic pricing, building more mixed-use housing near transit, and building less office space to work on the jobs imbalance, are important strategies to reduce traffic and commute time in the region. I urge you to continue efforts for traffic calming, parking pricing, and intra-city bike networks such as the Interim Peninsula Bike Way, despite initial outcry during the growing pain stage. Building more car-oriented infrastructure is not going to reduce congestion, but rather bring more cars on the road. This is road. This is called induced demand. In closing, I want to encourage you to keep up your commitment to sustainable transportation. I work in the Sustainability Office at the City of Sunnyvale, and Palo Alto's leadership and ambition has been a main catalyst for the Sunnyvale City Council to prioritize climate action. What we do also influences this entire region. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Megan Khan or Khan?
Khan. Good evening to the council, to the mayor, and to the staff. Thanks so much for your presentation. Some of you might know me. My name is Megan Khan. I'm on the grade separation community advisory panel. I've lived in the University City South Professville area for five years. And I'd like to speak specifically to cycling safety. I think that Palo Alto has done a wonderful job, especially with the bike boulevards. I feel very safe biking, you know, from where I lived, Midtown, and so forth. The one area that I do feel that this could be improved is specifically in the downtown area. Myself and my roommates all cycle to work for commuting. To Arthur's point, we all do have cars, which we use to, you know, run errands on weekends to other cities. But we do cycle commute. And so, it's really important to us to be able to get into the downtown area, to use the services there, or to the Caltrain station. A small anecdote, on the way to this very meeting, I biked from the Caltrain station, and a left-hand turn driver at Hamilton and Alma actually swerved to avoid me, because their light was green and they didn't realize that anyone would be crossing their path. I think that is the closest call I've had in Palo Alto. So I would, you know, speak for east-west routes, especially through downtown, as well for protected bike lanes. And finally, I would speak for transparency in projects and delays, whether projects have been approved and funded or going to move forward, and what the timeline is for those sorts of projects. I think that there could be a bit better messaging about those projects that are sort of in the pipeline but not currently being acted on. And finally, I think that the construction on Alma has really pointed out that there is a lot of spill-over traffic into the neighborhoods that I live in. And I think that that really is an issue for folks, being able to enjoy their quality of life and get to and from their schools and places of work. Thank you so much.
David Cole, Harlan Pinto, and Phil Burton.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'd like to suggest a bunch of recommendations here. The first one, which staff already spoke to, is follow the comprehensive plan. The first thing they stated was "sustainable transportation system that reduces single occupancy vehicles." I cannot state this any better than Elizabeth Greenfield did in her presentation just prior to mine. All those points are very valid and should be taken. Following the SIP plan, same thing. Sustainable transportation. If we're going to reach our 80-by-30 goals, we must have a sustainable transportation plan that addresses single occupancy vehicles. Next, be fiscally responsible. In the project list that came before you recently, you have authorized almost $80 million for parking garages in Cal Avenue and downtown. This will not solve our parking problems, and it will not create a sustainable transportation system. It's not fiscally responsible. You did not have the money to pay for these large deficit projects. These money should be spent on following the comp plan and sustainability plan, as Elizabeth outlined. Finally, the TMA project, the council's been very reluctant to fund. This is a very successful program. It should be replicated in the Cal Avenue area. This is what you could fund without building the garages. We could go... We could go a long way with that. Bike and Ped Scooter Share Program is on the ready to be implemented. It is nearly a free program. Why not, why haven't we moved forward with that? That's part of the solution. Do not build the downtown garage. Instead, fund these TMA projects. The successes, fund the Safe Routes to School, the complete streets, the bike-ped programs. These are the successes that's been outlined by staff. We need to continue to follow these great examples. And another one that hasn't been talked about, which is perhaps we can explore, is a program that might be called "House Palo Alto," or Palo Alto at Home, where we focus on trying to house the city workers, schoolteachers, the service workers in Palo Alto with the available rental stock that's here. Let the tech companies take the buses and do the telecommuting. This would keep our city services alive in the case of disaster, keep our schools local, house our service people that are obviously mostly at disadvantage for traveling long distances. It would put the burden on the tech companies, which are causing the problem, to either telecommute or increase their bus service. So let's house Palo Alto at home, see what we can do to solve this. Thank you.
Phil Burton, William Robinson, Kelsey Baines.
Harlan Pinto.
Oh, Harlan, I'm so sorry.
I think I was next. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name's Harlan Pinto. I live at 1845 University Avenue, near the city border at Woodland. I've been active and informed about traffic issues citywide since the early 90s. The concepts of residential arterials promoted by residents and adopted in the comprehensive plan address the issues identified by the residents of University and Barkadero, Middlefield, Charleston, Arastodaro, and Churchill. We generally endorse the optimal functioning of these residential arterial streets, but need to protect the residential quality of our streets. Several ideas from the comprehensive plan have been successfully adopted in the past two decades. Traffic calming citywide is one of them, to protect neighborhood streets. The Charleston-Arastodaro projects for the safety of all users, the promotion of bikeways, and the transportation demand management programs are all great examples of progress that has been made. I commend the past and present councils for their commitment and support of this vision in the comprehensive plan. Nevertheless, a major item from that time remains unfulfilled. That item is the proposed three-ton truck limit on the residential arterials. The current limit is seven tons. These trucks lead to backups and dangerous conditions for bicyclists, pedestrians, and other cars. One city estimate is that over 200 oversized trucks use University during commute hours. Willow Park's Road, Menlo Park's Willow Road is three tons. University in East Palo Alto is 4.5 tons. And the Palo Alto Police report, it is difficult to tell if a truck is above the seven-ton limit, except for 18-wheelers, but it's easy to tell if a truck is over three tons. Here are some other suggestions that could be deliverables that may help. Work to reconfigure the bus stops at University and Woodland. The development at University Circle in East Palo Alto moved the westbound bus stop to the Palo Alto side, and did not move the eastbound bus stop to the East Palo Alto side. These bus stops lead to backups and congestion during loading and unloading. The bus has come every 10 minutes, and at times, the drivers actually use these locations to rest if they are ahead of schedule, leading to backups, congestion, and inefficiency of the functioning of the University Arterial Avenue, thereby pushing traffic into the neighborhood streets. Number two would be to synchronize the timing of the lights through the University Circle area and across 101. And I understand there may be some progress on this one. Number four, please reconsider the Newell Bridge Replacement Project, EIR, to include a pedestrian and bicycle bridge only. Part of the dysfunction of the University Avenue Arterial is caused by cars crossing into East Palo Alto over the Newell Bridge, and then taking Woodland to University, where they then take a right on red and fill the intersection between Woodland and 101. That leaves all the cars on University and Palo Alto nowhere to go, even when the light turns green. We know that the cars back up all the way downtown and into the residential streets. The traffic studies show that bike-pedestrian bridge at Newell will improve eastbound traffic flow through the intersection. Please reconsider the EIR for this project. And please use traffic calming. This will help redirect those who use GPS-based driving direction apps to stay out of our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Phil Burton, William Robinson, Kelsey Baines.
Good evening. My name is Phil Burton. I am actually a 43-year resident of Palo Alto. I'm here to speak about one point, and I'd like to be as brief and as direct as I can be. I would like to talk to you about the grade-crossing separations project, and very specifically about the rail committee vote last Wednesday to drop one of the alternatives for further consideration and further study. The rationale for dropping this alternative, which was the viaduct alternative, was that it would have cost $250,000 to study it, and since a lot of people were opposed, why don't we just forget about it? I think that's extremely short-sighted. I can't say more directly. Short-sighted, because we have yet to develop the cost information, yet to develop the construction impacts, yet to develop the EIRs, all those issues that had to be balanced. And because we have an election coming up that's very controversial, I would suspect the most Palo Alto residents are not yet engaged on this issue. What we have heard from is a very vocal minority. And there's nothing wrong with being a vocal minority, but we can't allow a vocal minority to drive city policy. By dropping this viaduct alternative, we are letting that vocal minority drive city policy. Now, to be absolutely clear, I'm not arguing for the viaduct alternative, although I do believe it probably would be a lot less expensive. And I want to be also very clear that I'm not a right-wing nutcase like Howard Jarvis, who's supposed to taxes. Quite the contrary. I will vote for any bond issue to pay for grade-crossing separation construction, but I think it's fair to the citizenry as a whole to give them the alternatives. Therefore, I urge you to reject the vote of the rail committee and continue with the viaduct alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey Baines. And then Penny Elston, Elson, and Bob Moss.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Baines. I am a resident of University South, and would like to start by saying I'm very grateful to live in University South. It's a great neighborhood, it's very walkable. I walked here tonight, I walked to go grocery shopping, I walked to go out to dinner, and walked to run most of my errands. And I'm particularly grateful to live here, because I used to be part of the traffic problem. When I first came back to the Bay Area, I was a post-doc here in Palo Alto, and because of the cost of living here, I lived with my mom in the East Bay and commuted in every day. I regularly spent three hours in traffic and was very miserable. I did it for as long as I could stand it, which was six months, and then I eventually moved to Sunnyvale and was able to get back to Palo Alto when I got hired on as a psychologist. So I'm happy now to be part of the traffic solution in that I take much fewer car trips than I normally would. But I will admit that I do still have a car. I drive to work. And the main reason for that is, even though it's within a bikable distance, I feel like biking is kind of an intimidating prospect. I'm not somebody who is a skilled biker, and the idea of riding on the streets with cars going around me is just kind of scary. So I agree with a lot of the comments tonight that improving bike safety and creating protected bike lanes would do a lot to get people like me to make the switch from commuting in our cars to commuting via bikes. And I'm also concerned that the city council is taking some actions towards things that will serve to increase traffic. The most notable example is spending $50 million on a parking garage, which will invite 300 new cars onto our roads and will serve to increase traffic. So I agree with the brilliant comments of Elizabeth Greenfield, so I'll just say that I echo a lot of what she said, and I hope that the city will look to ways to reduce demand for traffic instead of adding more. And we'll say that there's something really special about the price of free. People really like free stuff. So free parking incentivizes driving, and it makes traffic worse. So I think Palo Alto should look to charging for parking, and then also demanding that employers reduce their share of demand by doing things like shuttling in their employees. Okay, well, thank you. Bye.
Thank you. William Robinson, and I apologize if I skipped over you. Okay, Penny Elson.
Good evening, and thank you. You'll be glad to know that I have been crossing out things I was going to say all night long when other people send them. I want to, first of all, I want to echo what Elizabeth Greenfield said, and I'm hoping that sometime she'll be running for city council. Good thinking there, Elizabeth. So I also want to say, though, there've been a couple speakers who talked about Safe Routes to School, and we've learned a lot from this program. We've learned a lot about how to, how to get people to change their behavior. And it really takes a very, a comprehensive effort. It takes educating people about the options that are available to them. You heard a speaker earlier tonight say that, you know, she talks to a lot of people who don't even know about the transit options. And in fact, we discovered that when we went out to the middle schools a couple of years ago and added a new education program where, that was transitioning to high school. We went in and taught the kids and the parents about availability of buses. They didn't know about them, they didn't know how to read bus schedules, they had to be taught how. They didn't know where they could pick up a bus, you know. So all of those things have to be taught, not just to kids, but also to the adults in our community. We all, in Palo Alto, many of us have car keys available to us, so freely available that we sometimes forget to think about our options. One of the things we've learned with Safe Routes to School is we have to teach people what those options are, we have to teach people to think about them, and we have to teach people to actively reach out and learn. Not just by, I mean, we obviously need to teach bicycle and pedestrian safety skills to children, but guess what? There are a lot of grown-ups who received bicycles as toys when they were kids. Nobody taught them how to ride a bike as a vehicle on a city street. These are, I think this, these are, the learning that we did in Safe Routes to School is something that I think is transferable to the adults in our community, not just around pedestrian and bicycle activity, but around all transportation modes. Strong encouragement programs, we do that with Bike Palo Alto, but I could see that being expanded more. Encouraging people to try something new just once, and encouraging lots of people to do it on a single day helps them see how a street can be transformed by many people doing something together. Engineering improvements, I'm running out of time, but I think you know the engineering improvements that I normally speak about, so we won't go there. Enforcement, you heard a couple of speakers earlier tonight talk about their appreciation for Chief Johnson's increase in traffic safety enforcement. I can remember a few years ago when we had many more officers doing traffic safety work on the streets, enforcement, and it would be wonderful to have a real traffic team again. And finally, data collection. You've heard multiple speakers tonight asking for more, more data, and I, we collect lots of that in the Safe Routes to School program, as you know, but we're interested in collaborating with, we've always been interested in collaborating with other groups. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you. Bob Moss and Niva Yarkin is last.
Thank you, Mayor Niss, and council members. I wasn't going to speak on this topic, but listening to my neighbors, I wanted to give you some perspective and some history on transportation and traffic in Palo Alto. Most of you probably don't know, but Palo Alto years ago had its own bus system. It ran down local streets, Meadow, Greer, Waverly, Charleston, El Camino, Middlefield. In the early 70s, they merged that with VTA. And VTA promised, "We'll keep your local bus system." And they did for several months. And they eliminated all the local buses. We used to have a school bus system, where the school district ran buses to and from all local schools. They dropped that, too. So we don't have a valid local transportation bus system. For a couple of years, Palo Alto did something unusual, you probably never heard of this before, but Palo Alto had an on-call bus system, where if you called, a minibus would come and pick you up and take you to your destination. Our oldest daughter was the very first one to use that bus. She called them up, they came in about 10 minutes and drove her from our house to Gunn. That lasted for maybe a year. Gone. So we have some problems. One of the problems you've heard a little about is narrowing Arastodaro. I'd love to give you some perspective on that. We talked to the traffic engineer at the time, when he was saying that if we narrow Arastodaro, there'd be no spillover of traffic onto local streets. So I did a traffic count on Maybelle before Arastodaro was narrowed, and it was a little over 2,700 cars per day. Narrowed Arastodaro, and the trips on Maybelle, it ended up to 3,500 cars per day, a 25% increase. So I said, "That's a traffic increase." "Oh, no," the traffic engineer said, "that's not an increase at all. We don't count that as an increase." We used to have an assumption that offices use 250 square feet per office worker. It's shrinking rapidly, and it's down under 100 square feet. So even if no more offices are built in Palo Alto, the office population and the traffic from that is going to keep increasing. This has increased the traffic to the, to and from the Stanford Research Park along Page Mill and along Arastodaro. I remember driving down El Camino, past Arastodaro a few months ago, about 9:00 in the morning, and traffic was backed up almost all the way to El Camino along Arastodaro. Traffic on Arastodaro, because it's been narrowed, has gotten awful. That was a real blunder. Arastodaro should be widened again to four lanes. I'll give one final comment. My neighbor is working for Google on a secret project, and he thinks it's going to serve our transportation system. And if Google is right, it may take a few years, our traffic system will be prob, will be solved. Google thinks they can be successful with teleportation.
Have them get in touch with us, Bob. Niva?
Since I'm the last speaker, I'd like to say goodnight, Mayor and City Council. My name is Niva Yarkin, and I live on Churchill Avenue. I knew there was a traffic problem two and a half years ago. It took me 45 minutes to drive from Churchill to downtown Las Altos at 6:00 PM. Forty-five minutes, going to Stanford Avenue and Foothill Expressway. More office development will continue to add to the traffic problem. Stanford expansion, Castelaya expansion, and construction on the trains will not help traffic either. No one is mentioning building new roads, because there is no room for new roads. Please consider office development expansions when trying to figure out how to solve our traffic problems. I don't have the answers, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So this brings us back to council for any comments, any other issues, but first, I want to look down at staff and see if you have any comments or anything you'd like to say after we have heard from the public.
Simply to thank the public for their comments and look forward to the council discussion.
In that case, starting with Councilmember Walbeck.
First, I want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight and spoke. I think we've heard a lot of really important points raised tonight. Definitely not universal agreement, but we've heard some very important points. Also, just one quick clarification, the rail committee last week did not vote to eliminate any options. We voted to put on the agenda a discussion about potential changes to the options we're exploring. There was no action taken last week on what options we're looking at. I just wanted to provide that quick clarification. So just a few thoughts on my mind, after, after having heard from people tonight. I think we all knew that traffic was a big problem in Palo Alto, and we've known that for a long time. We've seen it in our surveys and our polling that we've done as a city for the last several years. The only issue that surpasses traffic as a concern of Palo Altons is the cost of housing. Of course, these are intertwined with the, you know, with development of office. And I think we heard a lot of people arguing, despite differences on some of the specifics about how to get there, we heard a lot of people saying, "We need to focus..." people saying, "We need to focus on balance," and that we need to focus on having the transportation efforts that we pursue address the need. So there will continue to be debate about how we calculate the need. It's important that we have some more consensus about that. But I think that there's a lot of agreement that we need to spend more time working on this. The current city manager's not here, so I won't give him too hard a time until he's here in person, but, you know, for the last few years, I've been encouraging him to tell us what you need. Tell us on council, especially when it comes time for budget season, tell us what you need to be successful, because transportation has been and is a growing problem. I've been telling him that since 2014, and I think that as we're looking at the next few months and the transition in some potential changes on council, I mean, we know that there will be some changes, changes in your staff. I actually think that Nielsen's idea, Nielsen Buchanan's idea about taking a breather, taking stock, and then having senior city staff and the new city manager come back to us after doing that evaluation and say, "Here's what we need." I think that's going to be very helpful. I think it's going to be important that the city manager, the new city manager, tell us what we can do and be very clear about what we can achieve if properly resourced in transportation, whether that's in-house staff, more line staff, more management, consultants, contractors, temporary employees, whatever. I don't want to micromanage who you hire, how you hire them, on what terms you hire them, but it is time for us to invest in transportation in accordance with the severity of the problem. The movement of transportation somewhat out from underneath the planning department to give it higher relevance and a higher priority within the city organization, I think, was a positive move, one that I supported and happy, happy to see. It was too bad that we lost the chief of transportation right after that happened. A couple of other thoughts. I just want to emphasize, I know I've said it before, but I, I'm very pleased that we do have a traffic enforcement team. Of course, any officer on our police force can do traffic enforcement, but having a dedicated traffic enforcement team is important. Having motorcycle officers is important. Motorcycles can do things to chase down and catch up with bad actors that, you know, an SUV or sedan would get stuck in the traffic. And so having us continue to not just do a pilot project, but to maintain and expand our traffic enforcement detail, I think, is important for safety, for enforcement, for all users. On the city shuttle, you know, we've been talking about this for a few years. We were talking about revamping it, and we've done some studies, and if staff could just remind me, what is this, what is the status of having a real discussion about updating our city shuttle? Remind me where we're at in that, or when we could at least get a deep discussion specifically about the city shuttle back in front of council? Or any thoughts about that?
Yeah, Councilmember Walbeck, we haven't had the staff resources really to do the kind of work that we'd like to do on shuttle services. We think there's definitely some additional things we could do by expanding the shuttle program. We do get quite good use of the shuttle service now. There was a recent study done, I think a year or two ago, on expanded shuttle services. So we definitely want to get back to it. I think, specifically to your question, we, we need to take stock of all the resources we have and may need and prioritize the variety of things we could be working on, and shuttle services will be part of that discussion. So it'll be in next year timeframe.
Okay, I appreciate that. So that's one of the things to take stock of. And again, I want to emphasize, I'm not suggesting that we should just take stock of what our resources are and then figure out what we can do with those resources. I'm saying take stock of all, do that for sure, but also take stock of what it is that we need to do to achieve our goals. The goals in our, the goals in our comprehensive plan, the goals that are articulated by the council, by the community when it comes to transportation, and then come back to council and say, "Here's what we need in order to get that stuff done." Yeah, when it comes to shuttles, you know, we have the Marguerite Shuttle. We have our TMA, which is starting to really get its legs, Mountain View's TMA, you know, and Stanford, they run shuttles. We have Palo Alto Unified. I think even the study that we had a year and a half ago, I felt was actually quite timid and not very visionary. And so I would encourage thinking much more expansively about what improved shuttle service in Palo Alto looks like, whether it's run by the city or we contract with Stanford, whether Stanford says as part of maybe their mitigation for the general use permit that they're going to help us with our city shuttle program, either by expanding the Marguerite or running, providing their expertise to help us manage a city shuttle program. Also, with the Transportation Management Association, as that is expanding, I think there's a real potential for the TMA to play a larger role in operating shuttles in the future. Right now that we're expanding our TMA finally from downtown to town, country, village, into Caliphine Avenue as a pilot, which will hopefully be expanded and be made permanent, you know, there's a potential that I've heard people talk about maybe running something, or at least looking at the idea of, say, a triangular shuttle to connect East Palo Alto to California Avenue to downtown, right, so that service workers who live nearby, just on the other side of San Francisco Creek, can get to their jobs. And a lot of people frankly do work two jobs. Sometimes it's a service job in downtown and a service job on Cal Ave. And if we can help them get around, you know, that could reduce a lot of trips. We heard Justine Burt earlier talk about, as she's been going around trying to help gin up support and, or rather gauge interest in expanding the TMA, how much interest there is. And as liaison to the TMA, I hear that, too. There is a tremendous amount of interest, especially among service workers, for finding ways to get to work that they just don't have right now. So this is why I think we need to continue to be bullish about the TMA. So I'd say we should be really bullish on traffic enforcement detail, building up our transportation staff and the Transportation Management Association, right? And, you know, it's like, you know, we've been planting these seeds or, you know, laying an egg with the TMA. You know, I'm really curious what, you know, what can grow, what can hatch, what, what can sprout, depending on what metaphor you want to use. You know, and I've met with, you know, and talked with council members in Mountain View, like Lenny Siegel, in Sunnyvale, like Gustav Larson, in Los Altos, people like Jeannie Bruins. And, you know, when we're looking at places, for instance, like San Antonio Road, that intersects with multiple cities and connects multiple cities. You know, we actually, Jeannie from Los Altos, Lenny Siegel from Mountain View, and the Mountain View TMA leadership, and I all met a while ago and said, you know, "Let's start to explore this idea of what can we do along the San Antonio corridor?" It's a major hotspot. And you look at the map of hotspots, and San Antonio is a big part of it. So, you know, I think we should really be asking this question, what can we do on the San Antonio corridor, whether it's a shuttle or something else, to move people up and down that corridor? Because a big chunk of it's Palo Alto. We were talking about a potential housing project there. We've got the greenhouse there. And we do have a commitment as a condition of approval, when those new Marriott hotels were approved, we, we put it in that they have to dedicate funds to congestion management on San Antonio. So we need to secure that fund, those funds, and get more partners on San Antonio to reduce traffic there. So that's, and that brings me to this larger question of what does the future of TMAs in our region look like, because we know we can't depend on VTA, right? Mountain View has their TMA. Sunnyvale has two. We have two now with SRPGO, the Stanford Research Park one, and the Palo Alto TMA that's expanding to a big part of Palo Alto. People in other cities like East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and Redwood City are starting to think about this. Can we create a subregional federation of TMAs where our TMAs are working together? Where we can have economy of scale, where we can pool resources for planning projects, for planning shuttles like on San Antonio, for hiring staff? Instead of every TMA having like one half-time staff member, can you have some, some shared resources and then also some shared political weight? So when we go, or when TMAs go, or with the cities go to, for instance, Caltrain, to demand cheaper Caltrain passes to buy in bulk, to hand out to service workers, we can do that. You know, there's a point raised earlier that there's something magic about free, right? We, we give, we make parking free, but we make riding the Caltrain super expensive, and that needs to change. And so let's continue to explore this idea of expanding our own TMA and partnering with the others in the region.
Okay. The subregional TMA is something we might really take a look at, because TMAs in our area are not new, but as I think you said, they're, they're getting a real, getting a real grounding at this point, and they seem to be working pretty well in very nearby cities. Karen?
Well, thank you. First, well, I'm glad we're having this discussion. Thank you all the members of the public who have come this evening, and your comments are, I think, well-received, and I think you'll hear that. There, and I may not get to cover everything, but I'll try to do, try to do my best in a practical manner. So there are several goals that I think should be established as a result of tonight's meeting, that, many of which come from our comprehensive plan anyway, but maybe have not been focused on enough as we've tried to effectively and ineffectively deal with traffic. And the goals are, first of all, safety, whether that's emergency vehicle access to our local streets, or whether it's bicycling, as we try to enhance our bicycle routes. Having more traffic is actually counter to that. And also, as our air quality degrades, which we all know it is, that also impacts people's desire to bicycle. It's, on some days, it absolutely impacts whether I'm willing to walk someplace. I'm not a bicyclist particularly, but I walk a lot. And some days, it affects, affects greatly whether I'm willing to walk someplace or if I need to drive because the air quality is so bad. Noise, quality of life, and something that hasn't been mentioned, but I would say the local economy, Palo Alto's economy is reliant on people being able to get to our local shops, retailers, and services. And if it takes 20 minutes to get from, you know, one place that should take five or 10 minutes to get there, and it takes a half an hour, people aren't going to come. People aren't going to come. They're going to look for the closest, the closest place, whether it's Mountain View or Menlo Park or wherever, as opposed to coming to Palo Alto's shop. So I don't want us to lose sight of that. It also is an issue of economy. So we didn't, we didn't come to this condition overnight. We won't solve it overnight, but we need to take several steps to stop the degradation. There have been comments tonight talking about our data collection. You would think in Palo Alto, our data collection would be the best of anywhere, the absolute best of anywhere, and it's not. Many years ago, when, if anybody remembers Virginia Warhite, your other goes, not here still, but Pat Burke, I'm also isn't still here, but I know they would remember, Virginia Warhite. Virginia was a planner on seventh floor, and when we were looking at the El Camino design, having to do with the Grand Boulevard and even before that, we had models where you could, you could model traffic impacts, and you could look at cars, literally, literally, in a, in a software program that if you make a little adjustment to this or a little adjustment to that, you could see where the traffic would go if you made that change in real time. So I don't think when we're, when we're doing programs, when we're talking about changes, when we're looking at enhancements, we don't have that kind of diagramming that shows people what the impact is. We talk about the numbers, and people don't visualize numbers. People visualize, it's easy to see on, on animation, and I think we ought to go back to that. It's been, good golly, it's been 10, 12 years ago, and we don't utilize those tools that are quite readily available. Occupancy, office occupancy rates, people have talked about, going back to my days working on the SOFA plan around the 2000 year, just a thumbnail of those occupancy rates. It was about eight, excuse me, eight employees per thousand square feet back then. It keeps coming up, and we keep ignoring the fact that when we're doing traffic analysis for projects, we're basing it on a flawed, antiquated basis of eight, of four employees per thousand square feet. We can't continue to do that. It's not realistic, and I see no one taking notes except Rob on this, but it's real. Ask anybody. Ask employers, ask people in neighborhoods, ask other people who are in the, in the work environment. We have to, we have to change that. Our TDM programs, we need to post and enforce the enforceable TDM programs. We need to impose TDM programs that are enforceable and practically productive. We need to amend our LOS standards to reflect the impacts and delays that are rationally predictive rather than permissive. Menlo Park, for instance, has different LOS standards than does Palo Alto, and I would say that they predict more closely what the actual impact is of traffic delays. It's what we hear people talk about all the time. It's traffic delays that are causing air pollution and frustration in our community. We are giving, so one quick example of that is we have, we have such a threshold system that, I remember on one project in particular, El Camino, and that was going to impact El Camino and Page Mill Road, that we didn't quite get to where the LOS was going to be impacted by the next level, so we went not from F, but F'er. And I remember saying that at the time, because it was, it was going to make it worse, but not enough worse that any mitigations need to be put in place. We need to also not rely so much on mitigations as we do, but rather the reduction of impacts to begin with, especially considering that we don't have enough enforcement. And enforcement also requires oftentimes real-time enforcement, so by the time somebody gets there to enforce a situation, the situation is, is removed. So we need to avoid mitigations as a way to do business. We need to avoid impacts and impose mitigations that actually can be supported and monitored. There are some sticks that I think need to be put in place. There need to be failures, excuse me, penalties for failure to comply with TDMs and other conditions of approval that impact traffic, which impacts other things like safety, air quality, and such. Oftentimes, referenced tonight and other times we hear from people, we need to impose conditions of approval on construction projects that are enforceable. And right now, I'm seeing it on my street and have for a few months. It's just, it's, it's bad. I'll just leave it at that. We talk about regional, and I've heard actually in this, in these chambers to my, to my sadness, I would say, actually, saying that like, "It doesn't matter what Palo Alto does. This is a regional problem." And it is a regional issue, but Palo Alto contributes to it, and we need to be responsible for what we contribute or not contribute to it. I have, over my 17 years sitting at this dais, asked questions either before meetings or during meetings about why we don't comment proactively and completely on projects that are being brought forth in other communities. And the response is always, which I understand, but it's not an acceptable answer, that we don't have the staff to comment on projects in other communities, even though those projects in other communities can affect our community's traffic. It's clear that it does. We look at the changes that thankfully are brought forward and expressed. Projects in other communities do affect us. They do affect our traffic. We can't afford not to comment on the EIRs in other communities. Appreciation has been expressed, and I add to that for Chief Johnson for putting a traffic team on the streets. We need to enhance that. I'll skip a couple of things here that, other comments have been made about following the comprehensive plan. I absolutely agree with that, and the safe streets, the bike plans. As traffic grows, bike safety is diminished. I thought it was interesting that John Gislin, who I don't see, yeah, he mentioned that Topeka, Kansas has better traffic data collection than we do. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I think we are certainly lacking in that regard. I also wanted to refer to staff a question that he posed about a July consultant's report. I'd like to know where that is. So how do we pay for some of the things that have been on my list and other people's list? How do we pay for it? I've been greatly frustrated that for the last four years, we have not moved forward with an employee with an employee headcount tax. And the response has been, well, we're going to save that for when we need the money for grade separations. I've stated before, and I will state again, that I think that is misguided and not effective management of potential resources. For one, we could be banking those dollars for the last four years for grade separations, if that's where it goes. But also, we see the numbers, no matter whose study, whether it's the staffs, or the communities, the neighborhoods, daytime traffic is definitely more significant than nighttime traffic. It's no secret that our daytime population grows exponentially, and that traffic is caused by employees and employers to a great extent. Right now, we have a TMA, and who's paying for it? The public is, out of our general fund, for the most part. I want the city staff, my own personal ask, is that the city staff analyze whether it is cost-effective to do an employee headcount tax on next year's ballot as opposed to the next year's ballot. We can say very easily, it's like, well, the easiest time to put it on the ballot is when there's another general election. But do we lose money by waiting another year? And staff has not done that analysis. We are underfunding our TMA, and we need to look for systems solutions rather than piecemeal solutions. And while those pieces do add to the solutions of a general plan, we aren't looking, I think, systematically. So I will stop there, but I really want to thank staff for bringing this forward. Mayor Niss, even though it may have been a misstatement, it got this meeting to happen. And I want to thank very much the members of the public who have, over time, and over too long a time, you have had to monitor traffic situations and counts and impacts. But if we better partner with our community members, I think we'll come to better solutions more quickly. And again, we need to fund this as well, because staff is overstressed, and we know that. But if we look to the employee headcount tax, I think we can fund a lot of things that right now we don't have the funding for. Thank you.
Okay. None of the rest of you have your lights on yet. I don't know whether you're going to speak or not, so I'll take this opportunity to jump in. For those of you who came tonight, thank you. Really appreciate that. And I hope some of you looking at wherever the screen is are watching this at home. Several things really jumped out, and I'd like to ask staff if you think you can do some of these. Shared data came up. Data came up in any number of ways, but definitely shared data. There were at least four groups who mentioned collecting data. So if there's a way either to share, or document, or be absolutely sure of the data, that would really help. And that's probably going to be laid at your feet, Rob DeGuss, I'm guessing, as our...
Well, I would just note that we do have our open data platform, and so we are open by default. I think the only question is what data might be of interest for others to get access to, and we'd be happy to do that.
So, I think Karen said too, you know, shouldn't we have the best data in the world? I think we probably have pretty good data, maybe it just hasn't surfaced. But I also know that not everyone will agree on whatever data we put out, and that's also a big challenge. We talked about a temporary traffic engineer. I know that's something you're absolutely looking at. We haven't talked about paid parking for a while. Always a... That's always a hot discussion, without question. Paid parking, no paid parking. You know, as Bob Moss always comes up with stuff about the past, I know, Bob, you remember there used to be parking meters on University Avenue, which came out, as I understand, always glad to be corrected, but as I understand, those came out when the Stanford Shopping Center went in and began to essentially destroy the downtown. Pictures of the '70s of University Avenue, and even the '80s are pretty unattractive. Though, it was a pretty quiet place. I found the discussion about San Antonio fascinating. So what I'm hearing is they're signaled, but the signaled indicates then it's difficult across traffic. Is that what I was hearing, and is that true?
Mayor Niss, I'm not sure if it's true...
About San Antonio. Oh, well, yeah, Charleston, San Antonio, but overall, just crossing.
Yeah, it was an interesting comment. We did take note of it, and we'll speak with the staff that oversees the signals and the synchronization of signals to see what's happening there.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Yep.
Yeah. And maybe sometimes we're just not getting sufficient information out. Bikes, we certainly heard some good things about bikes tonight. I've even gotten some good comments on Ross Road. So I know that still is a... It's still a bone of contention, I do know that. Let's talk about the shuttle for a minute. I often think if you ask 10 people in Palo Alto if they know we have a shuttle, maybe one will know that we do. We're not publicizing it well. We especially don't tell people when they're coming or going. They seem to be sort of our mystery shuttle. Kids know about it, and I think seniors know about it, but I can't find others that seem to know we actually have a shuttle. So I think we could put out a lot more information about the shuttle. Bob, it's good to have you around. I remember that, believe it or not, that VTA took over the buses, and, you know, promises made were not promises kept, and that was very sad. And we continue, by the way, to fund VTA way beyond the service that we get in Palo Alto. And I complain about it constantly, and it's really troubling because we have so little control. Most of you know, VTA members are elected in their own communities, and then they're assigned to VTA. So their responsibility to their community, you know, is not what it might be as if it were more directly elected. We discussed a number of other things. Ball belts certainly were another bone of contention tonight. Probably we need to put out more information about why the ball belts and what difference they make. One last thing, two last things. And I think one of you mentioned, Nielsen said, can you pause? Can you pause, take a, you know, look at everything we have, come back together next April or so with another town meeting, and see where we are at that point? And lastly, good data on accidents on the north segment of Middlefield Road, north of University. So sometimes data points are just like that, they're accidents. And I know that one has gone way down. John was right. That was one of the ones where I spend a lot of time just sitting on the side streets and watching to see how many people were breaking the law. It's just so tempting to take one of those side streets and turn, and if nobody's watching, turn in the direction that you're not allowed to turn. So having Chief Johnson assign his motorcycle group to that area has made a big difference. So, thanks to all of you who came tonight, and staff as well as those of you who are here. It opens a discussion, it opens up certainly a very challenging area for us to continue to work in and work through. So thanks for that, and thanks to all of you who are out there. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so thank you very much, and I want to add my thanks to staff and to all the people who came out, and to John Gisland and the neighbors who, you know, began taking surveys and data and so forth. This is one of the reasons that makes such Palo Alto such a great place to live, and Allen, right, and yours was great too. I loved your Time series pictures and so forth, and that's a lot of traffic in Professorville, right? I mean, you think of it as, you know, University, Page Mill, and stuff like that, you know, which I want to come back to in a second. Just a couple of thoughts on what we heard tonight. Pretty wide-ranging discussion, actually, both traffic and also how we do traffic projects, a lot of discussion about that, you know, sort of broader aspects of transportation, jobs-housing ratios, and stuff like that. One of the things that I thought is interesting came out tonight is that, you know, this idea of there's a difference between local traffic and commuter traffic, and the sources and remedies of those things, there's probably some overlap, but there's clearly some major differences as well. And I think what I heard, and this is consistent, the biggest red sore pain point is the commuter traffic, right, as opposed to the local traffic. At least, that's what seems to be the most painful. Let's see. On that one, you know, the first order problem is probably demand, right? I thought, this is a fascinating chart, okay? So we had a lot of discussion about jobs-housing ratio, but, you know, if you weigh the job creation here by the number of the population of these different cities, right, actually, Palo Alto's is less than some. If you look at Santa Clara, they've got twice our population and eight times the job growth over the last five years and so forth. So it may be that some of the mechanisms we put in place over the last couple of years have started to attenuate that. But that's probably the driver for this, and the first order problem is demand. And then, you know, if we can control the demand, then some of the second order stuff like TMAs, TDMs, and so forth can make an impact. Let's see. One thing that I'm going to observe is that the way we funded the TMA last year was we doubled the price of parking permits downtown from $375 a year to $750 a year, okay? In San Francisco, those permits are $5,000 or $6,000 a year. So you would look at that, and you'd say, there's probably room to generate some more revenue from commercial parking permits downtown in order to fund some of these transportation mechanisms, and so... We shouldn't rule that one out. Some discussion of regional implications and sort of our limited ability by ourselves, and that's surely true on some of our taros, like San Antonio for sure, right? But I still think we've got sort of the largest amount of influence over some of the other ones we have, particularly some of the north-south ones like University Avenue, for example. I mean, growth in Mountain View and Redwood City probably doesn't impact traffic on University Avenue very much, but growth in Palo Alto will, right? So with that said, coming back to, I have a question, sort of, right, for staff, and we talked about the North-Middlefield project, and that's the neighborhood I live in, right? One of the things that a number of people talked about was cut-through traffic, okay? You know, Charleston, Rastadale, is that cut-through traffic on Maybell and so forth. So, it's kind of an interesting history, right, but in my neighborhood, there were actually some anti-cut-through measures taken, which were rush hour turn restrictions on Middlefield and Alma Street. And, you know, I've lived there for, you know, 27 years or something like that, and those actually made a difference. And of course, they make a lot bigger difference when it's enforced, which has sort of been sporadic, but even just having the signs there and so forth, you know, clearly makes a difference, right? So I guess one of the things I'd be curious about for staff as we go through this process, and, you know, Nielsen's let's take stock and so forth, I'd like to see us look at the problem of cut-through traffic, right? Because there are a lot of places in town that have this experience, Allen being one of them. And what are our mechanisms for controlling it? And then what are, what's our spectrum of enforcement options, right? For example, are there places that technology can play a role as opposed to, you know, Chief Johnson's traffic team, which my neighborhood is very, very happy to see Chief Johnson's traffic team out there, right? So both of those things. What are the mechanisms that we can control it? What are some of the enforcement options we have? And are there places that technology can play a role in that? I'd hope as we evolve through this process, we can sort of look at that in particular. I see no more lights. Is there... Councilmember Sharp?
So I think the first thing is, is that I think Councilmember Phil, or Vice Mayor Phil says correct, is that the commute traffic is really the big issue. And I think a lot of the frustration is, first of all, the commute traffic going out blocks driveways, it doesn't allow you to get to the freeway, those kind of things. So the question is, how do we get the commute traffic out more efficiently? And also cut down on the commute traffic where possible? I mean, part of the problem is, and I think that's why more of a, we call it a subregional, but branching out on the TMA to involve cities like East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Mountain View, assuming that some of that commute traffic comes from there, even Redwood City. I think the more we can do that, and frankly, some of the East Bay cities, of how can we do that? How can we basically come up with our... Since VTA is failing us, it simply is, I think the question is, how do we sort of regionalize? And we're not just in Santa Clara County. We're obviously right there on the border, and we have not only San Mateo traffic, we have Alameda and Contra Costa County traffic coming in. So I think that's a really good question. So I think this notion of, what would it take to solve some of these issues? And I don't think it's really that easy for us to sit up here and say, you know, you should do this, this, and this. I think the question is, we haven't had a focus on getting rid of traffic congestion. That has not been the focus of the city. And I think that's a separate focus that we should look at. And I think we've addressed some of that in terms of light timing, and we've worked on that. And I think the question is, is how do we do a better job with that? And I think we need to think out the box a little bit. I mean, you watch the game day traffic come in here, and we get it in, and we get it out. And yes, to some extent, we have game day on University Avenue every day. And the question is, okay, what do we do about that? And I think that's an important thing. And I think if we solve the issue of being on University Avenue and leaving the city, people won't be as tempted to cut through the neighborhoods. The problem is, it's not working, and you have backups. And I do think the speakers that said, let's look at trucks, let's look at what is slowing that traffic? How do we get that traffic out? That's really the question, and I can't really emphasize that enough. And, you know, I think they're separate, and I think we need to break down the issues we're trying to solve. When I looked at the east-west versus the north-south, it seemed to me that locally-generated traffic was not nearly as big an issue. And, you know, I hate to say it, and I'm fully supportive of bikes and doing bike paths and all that, but that's not going to solve the commute traffic. It may solve some going to Google, or some going to Facebook, but on the whole, it's going to be really hard to get people to bike across the dumb part and solve that problem. I just don't see it. So the question is, what other mechanisms can we use to solve the commute traffic? And I think that should be our number-one concern. And that's reducing bottlenecks, looking at lights. And then I do think data becomes a big issue, but the question is, what do people mean by data? And I don't know what that looks like. I mean, there seems to be a ton of data on phones everywhere. We know everyone has a phone, every car has a phone. Waze basically has that going on. I mean, that's what Waze does. So the data's clearly out there. The question is, is how do you access it? What does it look like? And is there any value in us putting in our own little counters? I guess we could do that at every intersection or every street, you know? What is a cost-effective way to get data that we can understand, and that'll help us then to figure out what to do next? And I think some of it has to be thinking like, we talk about, you know, the University Avenue intersection, I think people talked a little bit about how that backs up, and a lot of that has to do with some of the East Palo Alto lights and that. It may be in our interest to partner with East Palo Alto, frankly, to pay for some of those, to fix it, because I think that would benefit everyone. And so we may think about how we could, you know, basically extend beyond that. And I think a lot of this on the commute traffic will be solved by better traffic flow, by fixing our infrastructure to do that, and the TMA. I think those are the two ways we solve it. So I also remember when this came to Finance Committee, and we basically said, it shouldn't be the residents of Palo Alto that pay for the TMA. We made that clear. And we also asked how much money the TMA needed. And we gave the TMA the amount of money they needed at that time. They said they didn't need any more money because they had to ramp it up, and they had to go through this process. And I think Vice Mayor Phil says absolutely correct. I think there is still more, what's the word, demand elasticity, in the ability to raise those parking fees. So I do think that's an ability, and I think we did a really... So I do think that's an ability, and I think we did a really good job, frankly, on funding the TMA and at the same time raising the cost of parking, which I think lowers the demand for parking while at the same time not having Palo Alto residents funding.
It's actually interesting, if you go look at the TMA data from the report a year later, there is actually a correlation from the time that we moved, we raised the fees to an increase in carpooling in the downtown area, right? Which is a cheap way to go.
No, it is. And I thought that was one of the really, one of the better things we did, frankly, on finance. So, but I do think it's a staff focus on, on how do we get the cars in, how do we get the cars out, and how do we solve traffic congestion? And we do a lot of things where we have competing values. And sometimes those competing values make traffic congestions worse. And I think that's really what goes on on a Rastodaro road. A lot of people are looking at that and saying, you know, this has caused a lot of problems and that. And I'm not saying it has, I'm just saying a lot of people come out and say that. And it's because of competing values of that. And that's a, that's a tough situation. I mean, obviously, that's a huge commuter route for kids on their way to schools, there's all the civic centers, there's all of that. But I do think we could have been more sensitive as a city, frankly. And I think staff then reacted, fixed those bulbous, and I think we're doing better. And I think as we make major traffic improvements, especially anything that will, that will impede traffic, we have to think carefully about it. It reminds me of that we took a vote on council, rightly or wrongly, I mean, I think it's, there were, there were, there's two competing values there when we looked at Embarcadero Road. And there was two plans, one, which would have better biking on Embarcadero, and one that would have better traffic flow on Embarcadero. And it was a 5-4 decision by council. And there are good arguments on both sides, but the question is, we do run into these competing values on that. And I think that's often, often tough. I do think that, let's see, I do think we can do a better job, as I said, on data, but I think that takes a focus on what we want from data. I do think traffic flow is really important. And then I do think we need to stay the course a little bit on, you know, moving forward with our bike bridge, our bike paths, all of that stuff, but recognizing that solves a different problem. And then I think we have to be honest with ourselves and say, we do need to build a lot more housing, but that building the housing is not going to help the traffic. In fact, I agree with other speakers, it is more likely to make traffic worse. And so that is something that we have to grapple with as a community, but don't think to ourselves that if we build more housing, that's going to solve traffic issues. It's unlikely to. As speakers continually point out, and all the studies I've seen, if you build rental housing, about 30% of the people tend to actually live, live and work in the community in which they do it. If you build that rental housing next to a train station, then I think you do much better because people have the ability to come in. So that's why we continue to talk about building higher-density housing near transit. That's the theory. But if we're not building the housing next to the transit, frankly, and if it's for-sale housing, people tend to, you know, have numbers of places they work, and I actually can't remember the number, but 20% comes in of normally the number of people that, if you build high-density ownership housing, but I could be wrong on that. So I do think we need to just be honest about the data, think about it. And so this notion that if we fix the jobs housing imbalance, it's a regional issue, the jobs housing. Palo Alto's always had a higher jobs housing imbalance than anywhere else. And there are pluses and minuses to that from a community point of view. There's pluses in terms of money that comes into the city, there are pluses in terms of a reverse commute, there are lots of different pluses as a community for that. What we're not seeing, Lo, is that in a jobs housing imbalance, that if you got rid of the jobs housing imbalance in Palo Alto, that would not in any way make the traffic better for us, you know? So I do think that we need to, we need to recognize that and be honest with ourselves. Because the only way you actually solve a problem is to be honest with what the issues are and how do we solve it. And that doesn't mean we shouldn't build the housing, I strongly think we should. I strongly think that, that we have a duty to the region to frankly, build more housing, to do our part, and that we have a housing crisis. But I think to conflate that with solving the traffic problem will not allow us to solve the traffic problem. And as the traffic problem gets worse, which it may very well if we don't fix our roads and we don't do the infrastructure improvements, we don't put in the shuttles, we don't build the TMA out, we don't build the infrastructure to handle it, then I don't think we get there. So I also really wanted to thank all, everyone that sat through this meeting, everyone that came. I thought the speakers were well-informed, and it was very interesting listening to everyone. And especially on something like traffic, it's actually more useful than most because where you live in the city gives you a very different perspective on what the traffic is like. And so I thought it was really helpful to listen to people with their own personal experiences on traffic. And so I really appreciated it. And I want to thank Mayor Ness for, for setting this up. I think it's been very helpful, and wanted to thank you all for coming.
Tom, Tom's light is on, but I want to mention, because a couple of, a couple of people have been listening, which is always good to know. Anonymized data is apparently what we are looking for, and somebody said, ask Ed, he's going to know all about it.
Oh, then I know who prompted that question. Yes, I think I know what they're referring to, they're, yeah. We'll follow up.
Well, but, I mean, you can say it's, it's from cell phones. It's not, it's not anyone counting the cars, it's simply, it's simply an electronic way for gathering the data.
Right.
And I know it's been discussed a great deal, but I think it's one of the things that we need to look at, is, is collecting it in that way. And I don't know if somebody is, is aware of some place that's using it right now, some city, it would be really helpful to know that. I don't want to lose the idea of perhaps, though, coming together as well with our TMAs on a regional basis. We have, we have, within our scope right here, we have probably five or six. And I'm going to pursue that idea of looking at a sub-regional way to, to look at a TMA, because that clearly is one of the ways that we're going to get a grip at least on the problem, if not solve it, but at least we can begin that if we have that, that kind of coming together so that we all understand it. And you and I, Ed, have gone to meetings in Mountain View, so we know what they're doing. And I think if we pull that together with Sunnyvale, maybe Menlo Park, maybe East Palo Alto, we could sow the seeds of attempting to work together and make this a much more robust idea than it, than it has been. Tom?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Tonda, thanks for being here, hope you can help us. And Ms. Boyd, thank you for your work. I'll try to keep this short, to the point. I agreed with a lot of comments Councilmember Sharp just said, and I think he said it very well. So traffic, traffic is a council priority. I went back and looked, and it's been a priority for at least six years, as far as I could see. But I think, you know, we really need to act on it. We've said it's a priority. I'd like to see us maybe dedicate a meeting a quarter to traffic and parking issues on council, just to give it focus. In terms of resources, a lot of people spoke about it, but, you know, 10 and 1/2 people in transportation and parking, I don't want to just throw people at the problem, but, you know, it seems like we probably need more people. In terms of data, there are definitely new sources. I've seen demos, and Liz should, should like this, but it's exactly what you were talking about, Liz, anonymous cellphone data. I've seen demos for Palo Alto that shows where commuters start in the East Bay, how they get here, where they park their car, and when they start walking, they can tell the difference, you know, about how quickly the cellphone is moving. So we should, there's several companies that do this now, we should definitely subscribe to some of this data. We can get it down to local streets. Just very, very powerful. And in terms of metrics, I think Councilmember Holman was talking about level of service and thresholds. I really do think it's something we need to look at. There've been a lot of projects that have come, we've said they have, they have no incremental impact, and I think we need to tune some of those thresholds to really capture the impacts that we're seeing. And I do want to thank, John Geisinger left, but I did read the 30-page paper the citizens put together. It was found it very useful, and I think they had some key action items that I also thought were a pretty good list of things to look at. I think one thing that nobody's spoken about is kind of organizational structure within the city of our traffic department. Clearly, leadership's critical. I really think we should get a professional traffic engineer to head up the traffic department, and I hope that will be a requirement as we look for a replacement. And historically, traffic's been part of the planning department, and I think we need more of an operational focus. I think maybe we've been a little too much in our ivory tower. And so thinking about, maybe traffic should move to be its own department or somewhere else where it's more operationally focused and builds, you know, practical projects that work well. So I think largely, we're doing things that are useful, but we're not doing enough. And I think Councilmember Sharp, again, he said it, said it well, to say, let's, let's focus on some of these commuter impacts and really separate kind of local issues from commuter issues, because I think they are different and the projects could be different. And I think we do need to focus on congestion. And, you know, when I hear students come to us, it was last week, and they say it takes 30 or 40 minutes to go a few miles, I'm concerned. And when I hear some of our elderly citizens say, you know, they don't leave the house because of how hard it is to get places, I'm also concerned about that. So I think if we can get a lot more fact-based around traffic, and particularly when we look at some of these projects, if we can have kind of before-and-after data, that will be useful. I do think with some of these new data sources, hopefully the council will be able to agree to the usefulness and validity of the data. And again, I'd like to see us really kind of elevate the priority of this and have it come back to council on a regular basis, similar to what we did with the comp plan, where we really focused on it. And so I would suggest quarterly, but, thank you.
Are you pausing, Tom, or are you done?
I said thank you, and that was it.
So looking up and down, comments? Oh, Councilmember Ku, and then Councilmember Fine.
So thank you very much to everybody who came, as well as to staff for putting this together, and Mayor Ness for scheduling this. I agree with Tom, you know, I think that we should have some of these kind of discussions, particularly around traffic, more frequently, maybe the quarterly, as he suggested, would be a good idea. I am especially concerned, well, first I want to say thank you very much for having the temporary mockups over at Charleston-Rastodaro for all the bulbous and for all the different designs. I think it is necessary, I really think it also helped. Although when, after the changes were made and after all the comments that you considered, it would have been really nice if you did another trial period with the reduced bulbous so people can kind of try it out. I think that would help them, help people see how it is. I have gone out and monitored Donald, where there was the green box over there for the bicyclists going towards Termon. And I have seen that cars have gone into the green box when they're coming down Rastodaro and making a right-hand turn onto Donald. And in the mornings, there are cars that make that right turn in order to drop off their kids so that they can cross the road. So, you know, I do have concerns over there, because there is a lot of children that end up in the, in the, in the box, and they're actually also kind of bumping into each other and sometimes into cars that are parked next to them waiting for the light to change. So I'd really like to see that revisited. I don't know how far you are down the line. I did ask for a community meeting to go out to the residents over there, but it came out here. So definitely more communication with the residents over there would be nice. I think that's one of the main things that a lot of people are upset about. It's just that they don't know. There's no response back to them. Another thing is, you know, I totally support the bicycle lanes and sharing the road, but what I cannot understand is why can they not be separated? Why does the bicycles on some of the streets have to be right next to cars or with the cars? For example, after the Ross Road meeting, I would have hoped to hear more about what is going to be done, but there was just no, nothing. I understand the project was stopped, but there was no more discussion about what is going to be done? Or is this just something that we're going to continue pushing out? And as long as nobody says anything and we don't talk about it, it's going to move forward? Is that the plan?
Councilmember Ku, just wanted to jump in on that one there. So we are continuing to evaluate how that process went, what we learned, and how we might proceed. I think we committed to the council to come back in the spring on that project with recommendation for next steps.
So if you also take this into consideration in terms of Ross Road and some of the, the bulbous that come out and push bicyclists into the center of the road, if you just take the bulbous and cut it down a little bit so there is some space between the curb and the bulbous, so that the bicyclists, especially little ones, can take that road, that would be really, that would be really, how do you say, reassuring, at least for some of the people who are using that road. At this point, trying to encourage people to use their bicycles and everything, but not to fear that something can happen. Another thing is, you know, we have a lot of these Uber and Lyft's and that kind of taxi services that uses the apps to get people around. We have no regulations around them, so oftentimes when I'm driving around town, I see them just suddenly, very sudden abrupt move of stopping on the street, and oftentimes, the back end of their car is still out on the street. And so they're not completely pulled to the curb, and that causes some of the congestion and concerns also. I'd like to see you guys explore, you know, how we can go about regulating that too, unless that takes a council vote on it. So, does that take a council vote down the line when you guys bring it back, or can you consider it?
Not necessarily. I think what you're talking about there, Councilmember Ku, is illegal behavior on our streets. I've seen it too, especially downtown, is they drop off to a restaurant or whatnot. So we can talk to our traffic enforcement staff about that.
I'd like to explore that, because right at Phil's, when we turn off on Alma and we're turning onto Forest, there's oftentimes at the red zone, there's one of these cars stopped over there because they're going to go pick up coffee really fast or dropping off somebody. And when people are turning, they're trying to get off Alma, and there's always possibility of an accident there. Then another thing is, the TDMs, I mean, we really need to see something on that. We're approving buildings, approving development left and right, but the TDMs are not materializing, and they're really, really mediocre. So I know that that was something that staff was supposed to bring back to see what kind of programs can be put in, or what developments have to follow in order to have a successful TDM. So I'd like to see that come back too. So I'd like an update also on the university light sync up and down the road with East Palo Alto and Caltrans, not train, tran. I know that the Crescent Park folks have been working on this for a long time, and they've given you guys all the points. I know it's with Josh Mello, but, you know, it'd be really nice to kind of be able to at least give them updates of where they are. I hadn't realized that nothing has really been communicated to them ever since when.
So we're in regular communication with the Crescent Park residents. In fact, a couple of the residents there have been particularly good in helping coordinate that communication, Greg Walsh in particular, and a couple of others. That being said, we haven't made a lot of progress in actually implementing some sort of pilot projects in their particular area. We've had two community meetings with them, I think, maybe Councilmember Ku, or at least one of them. So we have a plan to proceed, to try and do something. So, we have a plan to proceed, to try and do something in the next year around Crescent Park related to the cut-through traffic. And your specific question to University Avenue and the synchronization of lights, it's complicated because there's multiple jurisdictions and cities, but there has been cooperation between the agencies, and I understand we actually received a grant to support the synchronization of those lights. So, we can certainly report back to the full council on the timing of when that likely will happen. Ed, you have more to add?
Well, I would only add that I do think that project is moving forward. I would, quite frankly, want to manage expectations that, as it relates to a larger community engagement effort, that I find it unlikely we'll be able to make a whole lot of progress until we fill some of these key positions. So, that would put us a couple of months out, but again, if we can do magic with the people we've got, then great, but I don't want to set that expectation here tonight.
And so, as long as that's communicated to Crescent Park and, you know, whoever else that's affected, I think that would be, that would, that's ideal. I mean, I think that's one of the key actions that was in most of the, most of the residents, engaging them when you're addressing all this. I think mostly, we need to kind of put traffic as a very high priority at this point if we can't just keep on building and not addressing the traffic issues that we're facing. Yes, did you have something to say? I'm sorry.
I was just going to echo your point that unfortunately, or fortunately, the fact of what we're dealing with is, as we try to address traffic problems in one location, there are potential domino effects, and that's why a significant engagement effort is typically involved, and that's why it's important that we do them carefully and do them right.
Thank you. As for regional, I mean, the traffic that we face is due to regional issues, and we, and, you know, I understand that. However, at the same time, I think, you know, for us here in Palo Alto, we do need to retain some kind of, some kind of quality of life for people who live here. So, I believe we're having study sessions with some of the higher elected officials. How does that work? Is there a time when people can come in and talk and have oral communications and make comments so that the higher officials can take it back?
I think it's primarily a discussion between the council and our state representatives that are calendared over, actually, the course of the next month or so, but those will all be noticed, and I'm sure there'll be opportunities for speakers as well.
Oh, there will be?
I think there always are for your study sessions and the like.
Right, because on regional issues, I think we need to pull them in in terms of helping us to ensure that, you know, if it's regional traffic that we're dealing with, then they need to kind of have a hand in resolving those issues.
Yes, and also, do want to clarify, in our presentation, I don't think we intended to suggest that regional issues are out of our control. We certainly are a partner, a player in regional issues, both specifically with transportation as well as overall, and examples such as the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. So, simply to point that these are complicated issues that, in order to address effectively, we're going to need to focus our energy.
Thank you. In terms of, can I ask, so Stanford, you know, in order to meet their TDM with the county, they have put in counters, right? Is that in any way possible for us to be able to do something similar to monitor how much traffic we get, traffic counts, et cetera?
Actually, Mike?
We could possibly even consider having, since traffic changes a lot, well, not a lot, but, you know, there are changes along time, we might want to kind of start considering permanent monitors in order to keep track of what's going on and how are different intersections being affected, and how are some entry points being affected, and can use that as a study for many different areas that we're looking at, not just the rail, but when, yeah, is that something possible?
I think certainly, having a more regular method to collect data, again, related to traffic, could certainly serve us. The fact that we needed to go back to 1967 to get comprehensive information is not a great situation, so I think that's certainly something we can look at.
Well, it kind of gives us kind of knowledge at all times, you know, and we can see the fluctuations as time goes by, so I think that's something that we really should kind of consider, not just consider it, but really implement in time and look for budget items so that you can put it on next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you, staff, for bringing this to us, Mayor Ness, for putting this on our agenda, and thank you to everyone who showed up, and especially to those of you who have stuck around for this long meeting. So, a lot of points to make, some of my colleagues have made, I agree with a lot of what's been said, and a couple of questions. But first, I want to step back a little bit and try to reframe this a little bit. You know, it's a town hall meeting, a discussion of traffic in Palo Alto and the region. I think it's important to not only think about traffic, but also think about this in terms of mobility. The point is not always to, you know, make it easy to drive, it's that we want to make it easy for people, goods, and services to get from one place to another. There's a quote I'm reminded of by Jane Jacobs, "Traffic congestion is caused by vehicles, not by people in themselves." And I think it's important to reframe that because we have had a lot of people here tonight talking about things like safe routes to schools, shared streets, limits on truck tonnage, things like that. And so, it's not just like vehicular flow and congestion, I think we should be framing this as, but somewhat more as a mobility challenge. Another broad topic that a few people did bring up is how this relates to our comp plan and our SCAP, our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. So, there are goals in our comp plan, which we've agreed on as a community, and I think our mobility planning should hew to those goals as much as possible. Similarly, with the SCAP, which is one speaker mentioned, something like 60% or 65% of our greenhouse gas emissions come from the transportation sector. This is clearly also an issue that affects our environment, and I don't think we should lose sight of that. One question to staff, we've had a lot of residents here tonight speaking on issues that are specific to them, or maybe ideas that they have in solving some of these problems, and I'm wondering, and this is kind of a broad question, but how do we actually integrate that public feedback and keep folks apprised of this? I mean, it's kind of the same challenge we have on the rail grade separations thing. We have lots of folks show up, I see a few faces I've seen before, but, you know, to the point a few have made, if we have quarterly meetings, I may not want just like, you know, new people showing up saying like, oh, you know, traffic sucks, and like, the city's not doing anything, and I'm still dissatisfied. So, I'm wondering if we have any thoughts about how to keep those loops going?
That's a really good question, and quite frankly, I'm a little bit, I'll say, dumbfounded as to how best to respond to it, because to your point, and again, not unlike our rail discussions, as people join the conversation or continue through the conversation over several meetings, it can appear either to be starting from scratch or they need to get up to speed. So, I think we're still going to need to search around a bit for the best approach to that. I would like the opportunity for staff to go back and sort out the feedback we've gotten tonight because there is a lot there.
Okay, no, it's helpful. I just would encourage us to try to figure out some kind of plan around that. I know it's kind of stop-start on rail a little bit, and it's not perfect, but I think it's better than some efforts we've done, and there may be an opportunity here to kind of create that kind of group mentality. And I think it kind of speaks, to another point a lot of folks have raised about metrics, data, and reporting. I think it is important that we kind of identify what do we want out of our data streams, what are we going to measure, how often are we going to report on it, and kind of identify a certain, like, table of, you know, these are the things we measure in Palo Alto, to measure congestion, to measure, you know, level of service at an intersection, to measure, you know, bike safety, so that we kind of have a regular set of data points that we can all go back to here on council and in the community, and folks are aware of all that. I do agree with Councilmember Koo, you know, the more regular that data is, I think the happier our community will be and the better decisions we'll be able to make. But as Councilmember DuBois noted and Mayor Ness, there are new options, you know, that are infrastructure light, right? Maybe we don't have to install, you know, the, whatever they're called, the road barriers where, you know, you can count cars, if we can do it via cell phones or other means, I think that's probably preferable. One other big area I've been thinking about, and has come up in a few ways tonight, but I think is important to kind of put a point on. Occasionally, in this community and on this council, we take steps or solutions to one problem that are counter to our goals on this issue of mobility. A few I want to bring up and not necessarily harp on, you know, putting money towards a parking garage, which incentivizes new traffic, you know, doing office developments which are further from transit, so folks have to drive rather than having the opportunity, at least, of taking the train or a bus, giving away parking for free, opposing bus rapid transit on El Camino. So, there have been a few, I think, strategic errors that we don't always connect the dots back to these mobility challenges, and I would just encourage us to all be thoughtful on those issues. One area, and I was encouraged to see somebody from the business community, but I think there's actually a huge issue here of kind of interacting and integrating the business challenges too. If, you know, we believe that inbound commuters are a large part of the traffic problem and mobility issues, then we really need to reach out to those groups, involve them with the TMA, see if they have data they're willing to share with us. And then also, as Councilmember Holman mentioned, you know, if there is some kind of business tax, we absolutely want those groups involved, so we're doing it in an effective way that also respects that, you know, businesses are part of this Palo Alto community, and we want them to be successful too. A few just last small points, I guess. One speaker did mention truck ton limits. I would love to see some information about that, I had no clue that the limits are different in neighboring cities, and once you get to Palo Alto, you can have much larger trucks in our streets. I just didn't know that. A few mentioned protected bike lanes. I know there was, you know, a lot of pushback on Ross Road. Personally, I would also prefer to see protected bike lanes separated from traffic. Sometimes we've reached kind of a middle-of-the-road, to use a phrase, approach, which hasn't really solved the situation for either party, but I understand where staff is coming from that at times. A few people have mentioned organizational change and what we need to do in the transportation planning, police department, but, you know, Assistant Manager Chikata, as you take the lead here next year, I'm sure we look forward to seeing from you what you think those changes may be. A few other points, Councilmember Scharf mentioned staying the course in a few decisions we've made. I think that's actually really important, and we shouldn't knee-jerk these solutions.
[laughter]
Do you want me to repeat that, Liz?
[inaudible]
And so, I think, you know, Mr. Gislin at the beginning of this said, you know, he's been working on this for five years, and he's, you know, feels frustrated at times, feels there have been some successes. These are big, you know, physical changes in our city, and so, I think we do need to have a little bit of patience and stay the course in some of the programmatic and physical changes we're making. At the same time, we need to be a little flexible and agile in some of our, some of our opportunities, and that makes me think of kind of pilots. And so, I know we've recently heard a fair bit, at least in our email, from folks like Lime Bike, who are interested in the bike and scooter share. We've seen outreach from Waymo about doing rideshare pilots here in the city, and I think in the transportation or mobility space, we need to have all options on the table and be willing to do those and at least accelerate them, to at least measure, are they successful? Do they help move the needle? Councilmember Koo mentioned rideshare sometimes causing issues. I think she brings up a good point. I know a lot of cities are actually looking at their curb regulations and what is, what does the curb look like in the future. I've certainly seen the same behavior and probably participated in it myself, where you hop out of an Uber or Lyft and you arrive at a red curb. That's not ideal. I don't think we should just outright ban those transit providers, but we may want to look at, you know, do we have shared drop-off points, right? Like you see at airports, some cities sort of like pink curbs where it's known this is, you know, the Uber or Lyft pickup point, and that may solve some of those issues. So, overall, I mean, I think this was helpful. I think if we do decide to move forward with something like this or some kind of traffic or mobility meeting on a quarterly basis or whatever it may be, I think we need specific goals, and that would probably mean agreeing on certain data points that we on council want to look at regularly and understand how we're executing against them. But there is a lot in this space, and I encourage us to, you know, be rigorous, but also a little experimental, and figure out what new services and mobility opportunities we have in Palo Alto. But thank you all very much, a lot of good comments in the public and from my colleagues.
And Greg Tanaka?
Yeah, I also want to thank everyone for coming on. I know it's getting to be really late, so thank you for participating and tending and staying with it. This is an important topic, and thank you for staff for your guys' work on this effort. It's a hard one. So, I'll just comment on some of the things my colleagues have said already. I think in terms of TMA, having kind of like a subregional TMA, trying to advertise some of the overhead seems to make sense to me, but I think it's also important to have some proper local control so we can actually solve the problem that we're trying to solve. I also agree with the idea of having data. In fact, I think we should have open data so that members of the public can do some analysis themselves, or perhaps you should partner up with some local companies like Google, because I know they're doing a lot of work in this space in terms of traffic analysis and prediction. So, maybe it's, it would be a good idea for us to try to leverage some of the smart people around here. One other idea is, because I also agree that, you know, spending a ton of money on a garage is really, you know, it makes you wonder a little bit. So, when I went to Las Vegas once, I, I went to Las Vegas, downtown Las Vegas, and what they had was something really interesting, which is, if you go to downtown Las Vegas, because they're trying to get, downtown Las Vegas is not where the strip is, it's actually separate. They actually would pay for your Uber ride, maybe it was Uber or Lyft, I forgot which one it was, but basically, it was free one-way. And, and so, it was a way to get, it was free, it was a way to get, you know, people to shop there or eat there, but not cause a parking problem. And it makes you wonder, like, if we would do something like that, you know, how, like, you know, especially if you're spending $40,000 on garage, how many Uber rides or Lyft rides could that pay for, right? And how much, how much instant benefit could this bring if you did something like this? So, I don't, I mean, I don't even the user of it, I didn't actually study the program, but I think staff should, you know, maybe this is something you guys could look at and see if it makes sense for us or not. But despite all the trials and tribulations that we've been having in terms of congestion, I agree, it's a big problem, and we want to solve it, we need to solve it. I actually think it is solvable, okay, and here's why. So, I'm not sure if anyone here has ever been to Shenzhen? No? Okay. So, you know, Shenzhen, back like in the '70s, when this chart here, you guys have the daily volume going from, you know, like 60% increase, Shenzhen was actually smaller than Palo Alto, okay? So, it was 30,000 people, like, back in the '70s. And it's one of the fastest-growing cities on earth, actually, right now. It's now about 11 million, right? So, it's very, very fast, going from 30,000, which is smaller, half the size of Palo Alto, to 11 million. At the same time, Palo Alto went from 56,000 people to 67,000 people, right? So, this contrasted growth difference. And as a result, Shenzhen was, in China, the number-one congested city. It's no wonder, going from 30,000 to 11 million people, right? So, it was the worst congested city, and that's saying a lot because China's traffic, if you think traffic's bad here, you've got to see China's traffic, right? Just truly awful. And so, it was, it was the worst city of congestion, and then suddenly, it drops down to 37. So, that's still not great. So, being the 37th worst congestion in China is still bad, but it's not as bad as being number one. And, and so, if you go there, and I've been there a bit, it's like, it's crazy because there's less and less traffic, right? They have this mass, they're one of the fastest-growing cities on earth, and yet, the traffic is like getting less and less and less. You go, what the hell? Like, how can you have less, less congestion and all this growth? Like, what's, what's going on here? And in fact, Bloomberg, I'm not sure anyone here reads Bloomberg, but Bloomberg did an article recently called "The Quiet Mega City," it was on Shenzhen, and it just talked about, like, you know, once upon a time, Shenzhen was, you know, just loud, crazy, you know, congested, polluted city, and how it's changed a lot, right? Now, 37th, nothing, 37th worst congestion in China is nothing to be brag about. So, the question is, like, what happened, right? How, you know, how did this, and I can't say it's solved, but it's better, but how did, how was this addressed? Well, it was really, it was three, it was kind of like, there's three parts to the strategy. The first one is hard for us, but it's something which, you know, I'd love for us to happen, for us to do here in Palo Alto, but they did massive investment- But they did massive investment in underground public transit. Now, that's really hard to do here, right? Because how do we pay for it? We don't necessarily have the density for it either, but that's something that, I think they did 15 subway lines, so that, that had a big, pretty massive impact. The second they did, they did, and it's something which I'm still kind of wondering about here, is they did, I think Shenzhen, because it's also like Palo Alto, it's pretty flat, it's not like very hilly, but they have, it's like the scooter, bike share capital of the world, right? So you go there and you go and look, look at a corner, and there's like 100 bikes, like just sitting there ready for you to take and go to other places. And so what, what happens is that because of the subways and the bike shares, you could, it kind of solves the last mile transit problem. And so, and so this has done wonders in terms of congestion. And then the third thing that has happened is, and it's something which Councilmember Kew has talked about and Councilmember Fines talked about, is protected bike lanes. So not only did it put the, you know, have all these bike shares all over the place, but in fact, there's like 10 different bike shares, or maybe more, maybe 15 different bike shares in Shenzhen now. It's like, they have so many different colors now. But with the protected bike lanes, and you have protected bike bridges, and it's just like, it's totally, the bikes are totally separated from the cars and from the people. And, and I think that's really important, because, you know, for myself, I'm a pretty diehard, diehard biker. I'll take the lane and there could be a big diesel truck behind me and I'll just like, too bad, I'm taking the lane. But a lot of people, it's just, it's intimidating, right? I think for a lot of people, especially for kids, it's very intimidating, right? To have a big diesel truck behind you and you're praying to God you don't fall. And so I think that, that kind of three-pronged strategy has really done wonders for congestion. Not to say they've licked it, or it's better than here in Palo Alto, because it's certainly not, but it gives me hope. It gives me hope that with, you know, work from staff, work from the public, that this problem is solvable. And, you know, our problem's not nearly as bad as Shenzhen's. But it's something which I think with investing in the right areas, I think we can make progress. So with that said, I do have a couple of questions, which is, you know, it's been at least six months since we approved this bike share, or scooter share, I forgot what we called it. And, you know, I've gotten emails from some of the scooter share or bike share companies saying, hey, you know, we've been trying to work with your staff to make it happen. And so where is it? Like, what happened? And they tell me it's like staff's, it's like, maybe staff can answer, what happened? What happened to this?
So it's not gone. You know, council has a policy on the bike share program that was approved, we're just slow in getting something started and off the ground. We do have two applications in, one is incomplete and the other one's pretty complete. I think it needs a little more work on the public outreach piece that we're working on with the general manager of that particular forum. So we hope in the next, in the next few months, we'll see some bike share programs out there. We are a little bit concerned, there's been some, some blowback in some cities that have had bike share programs, there's been too many bikes or too many scooters, and it's been a problem on the sidewalks and other things. So we want to be sure that we, when we introduce something, that it's not disruptive in a way that the community then says, we don't want any of that. We want to introduce it in a way that actually gets uptake and they're really successful. So we're trying to be pretty measured in how we bring it forward.
Yeah, what I saw really work well in Shenzhen was, was, but they have much higher density in terms of bike shares, but they, they have like someone like stationed at a corner. But, I mean, we're talking about 100 bikes here, so like, just like, and they have so neatly stacking up all the bikes and, you know, I'm not sure that they had 1% per corner or what's, what's, but it's like, it's, in the past, we'd see like bike shares like just all over the place, right? It's like, you know, your kid's bike just, you know, looks like a mess. But they've gone, I don't know what they did, they did something where like everything is like nice and neat. Maybe it's fines, I don't know what it is, but they, they have it all nicely neat and, yeah, so, but yeah, I hear what you're saying, you want to make it successful, and I think that makes sense. But one thing to think about is that every time someone takes a scooter or bike share, that's one less car trip, right? And so if you, if you want to really solve the parking, you know, traffic problem, congestion problem, this is, this is definitely part of the solution, maybe not the only part.
Yeah.
The other question I have for you, and it's something I had during my office hours yesterday, but someone came in and showed me all these pictures of bike lanes being blocked by orange cones, by, you know, tree branches being dumped in there, by trashcans. I mean, I'm actually, speaking of that, like in my office in Palo Alto, the trash company is telling me to move my Honda-sized trash bin in the bike lane. And it's like, it's like crazy, right? So what I wonder is, is like, what's, what's the policy? Because I, I mean, he showed me this picture after picture, picture of like all these bike lanes being blocked. And I think the problem with that is that it causes bikes to have to really go in the center of the road, right? And I can imagine for, especially like on the safer routes to schools for kids, if kids have to be, you know, the bike lane's blocked and they have to go through traffic, it just makes it that much more like, ah, do I really want to bike or not, right? And I think what's real important, if we want this to, and we have the perfect weather, we have the perfect terrain, we're really flat, I mean, so we should, we should, we should really try to make it easier for people to bike. But if we block, block these bike lanes, it makes it hard. So I was wondering if staff could talk a little bit about that in terms of what's the, what's the story behind that? And, you know, why, why does a trash company tell me that I got to move my Honda-sized, my Honda-sized trash recycling bin to the street? Because, I mean, it's just, I'm just trying to understand the rationale behind, behind that kind of thinking.
So I appreciate the question. And we've experienced, you know, complaints in this area and we are aware of the increased coordination that we need to have sort of between different construction work and maybe the trash pickup folks and other people to be aware of how important it is to keep those bike lanes available. And not every, not everyone has that same sort of consistency and awareness, and that's something that we need to work on. It's been identified by our Safe Routes to School folks a number of times, that that seems to happen just too, too many times, and so we're working on better coordination.
I mean, like in my case, in my office, I have a gigantic parking lot and this trash bin that's, you know, massive, right? You can't, it's hard to push, right? And it's like, so the trash company's telling me to move my trash bin 100 feet into the street, right? So I don't know how the garbage bin, because it's the thing with the big arms, you know, the big dumpsters, right? I don't know how the heck they're going to like pick it up and dump it over, right? But it just, it just seems like bad thinking to, to have something that big in the street, right? And in fact, I don't, I mean, for us, we can't even move it, it's so heavy to push, right? So I just, I just wonder, why, why, why do that, right? Why, why block bike lanes? Why, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me.
We appreciate you bringing it up, it's something that we're working on and we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much to staff. I know that took some time and energy. May not have been tops on your list to do it, while Jim was out of town, but I really appreciate it very much. Wayne, it's nice to have you here.
Thank you very much.
And we look forward to seeing more of you. So with that, this is a study session and we are adjourned.
Let's all rush to the garage and see who can drive out first.
(laughter)